I would like to call this meeting to order. Welcome to the Brevard County Commission meeting on this 24th day of 2017, which means we only have 341 days left in the year. And for those of you that have a keen interest in useless information, I will tell you that on this very day 82 years ago, Kruger Brewing Company became the very first beer distributor to put beer in a can. Now with tongue in cheek, I can say with certainty, that was a significant achievement in the minds of many. And that is what was happening on this day in 1935. Now moving on to more important business, we'll do the invocation. As you know, we share this privilege throughout the commission. All five of the commissioners gets to pick a person of faith that can come forward and do the invocation. Commissioner Tobias has opted out of that. He said he has no interest in that. So since we had short notice from him, we didn't have time to get a pastor in here, so I do the honors today. So would you stand, please? Father God, we long to find serenity of spirit in the midst of life struggles. We long for harmony in our families and in our relationships. We long for the day when each family everywhere might live in peace without fear. Yet sometimes there is fear, distrust, and unresolved anger within us. We often are not willing to take the steps that peace requires. Look upon us with your kindness and mercy and show us how to walk in your paths. I ask for these public servants that are on the dais with me, that you would provide us with guidance and wisdom. I pray that we will govern our county using the very same biblical principles that are the foundation of our great country. In the precious name of Jesus, I pray. Amen. And Christina Isnardi?
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, so we'll do our first resolution. And that would be... Oh, oh, yes, we do. I'm glad you're on top of your game today. I knew that. I was just checking to see if you were paying attention. Okay, I need an approval of minutes for November 15th, December 6th, December 20th at the 2016 regular meetings.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion for approval on the second. Anyone wish to vote no? It passes 5-0. Okay, now moving to resolutions. District 2?
Yes, thank you. It's an honor to recognize our Brevard County School Crossing Guards. They play a major role, as you know, in our community. So I'd like to have Debbie Marancy, Stephanie Rude, Camille Gray, and Joe Allen Parrish come up, please. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm going to read the resolution, and if you all would like to speak after that, feel free to. Whereas each and every school day, dedicated crossing guards spend valuable time assisting our children across busy street intersections as they arrive and depart from school. And whereas Brevard County recognizes and places a top priority on child safety and awareness. And whereas education plays a critical role in ensuring the safety of our children, and crossing guards are there to assist and educate. Whereas in addition to their daily service, crossing guards provide a valuable service to our community and deserve recognition for their tireless efforts. And whereas crossing guards often encounter weather, traffic, and work in hazardous situations that makes the job of crossing guard a real challenge. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida does hereby recognize February 3rd, 2017 as Brevard County School Crossing Guard Appreciation Day and express its appreciation to all crossing guards for their dedicated service, done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 21st day, or 24th, 24th day of January AD 2017. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we go forward to accept this resolution.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Barfield and a second by Commissioner Isnardi. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, it passes 5-0. Congratulations.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to keep the children safe in the unincorporated area of Brevard County.
Okay, moving right along, we have another resolution, and this will be from District 5.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we found out late in the afternoon yesterday that Ms. Leary would not be able to make it. She had a bit of a family situation, so I'd like to move this item to the February 21st meeting if that's okay with everybody.
Absolutely. Do we need a motion for that? Mr. Knox?
Nope.
No, okay. Moving right along, we have the consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from that? I would like to pull 2A5 and 2A6. Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda in its entirety with the exceptions of 2A5 and 2A6?
Motion to approve consent, removing items 5 and 2A5 and 2A6.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Isnardi and a second by Commissioner Barfield. Does anyone wish to vote no? Passes 5-0. Okay, the reason that I wanted to pull 5 and 6, I just wanted to get comments from Commissioner Tobias, since both of these are in his district. Wanted to give him an opportunity to speak to us and let us know what his thoughts are.
Pleasure, the Chair, to proceed.
Absolutely. You have the floor.
I've no problem with this being a cumulative board decision or on the consent agenda. The first one deals with a safety procedure lining up a intersection in the district and District 3. And the second one, I do have a little bit of concern with. This looks to the future widening project of Hollywood Boulevard with no date to commence. This is, has a fiscal impact of over more than $120,000. It's my understanding, and I believe yours as well, that Brevard County has many failing roads. So to spend more than $120,000 on purchasing someone's land, and not, I'm not a real estate expert, but my guess is that we're towards the peak of the market, may not be fiscally prudent. And it may best be used to pave or to fix roads that are in current disrepair instead of looking down, down the path years and years and years down the road. So certainly open to the pleasure of the board, how they decide to, to move forward on both 5 and 6.
Anyone else have any comments?
I wouldn't mind if, if it's okay with the board that we get an update from either Mr. Denninghoff or Mr. Whitten to find out the status. I mean, it's obviously Hollywood, we do need to widen Hollywood. I don't think anybody would object to that or disagree with that, but maybe a status might put some mindset ease.
Mr. Denninghoff?
Commissioners, Hollywood Boulevard has long been recognized as a road that needed to be widened to accommodate traffic. It is one of the principal corridors that serves the commuters that are basically traversing from the city of Palm Bay up into Melbourne and parts of West Melbourne. The, it's not by any means the only corridor, but it is heavily traveled. And it's, would, when widened, is going to provide relief to the other corridors that are there. Dairy Road and Minton Road are the principal two that are ours, and then also I-95. The, we have a preliminary engineering plan that had been prepared that more or less gets the, the design for the road up to fairly close to about a 30% level. And so by so doing, we're able to identify locations for the widening, the future widening for the roadway. And by doing that, we're able to acquire right-of-way whenever an opportune time comes up and do it purely as a willing seller that we would deal with as opposed to having to use any compulsory means to acquire the right-of-way. As you get closer to the time that you would acquire right-of-way in order to actually do the construction, then you would probably revert to eminent domain. And, and the costs associated with that are substantially higher than what you would see today. And even if it was, I don't know if we're at the peak of the market right now or not, but the, but I do know that the costs associated with acquisition are substantially higher because of the way the statutory construct is associated with eminent domain. And we therefore will avoid those costs. There is no denying that we do have a lot of roads out there that are in need of resurfacing. I've been saying that for many, many years. The, but we also do have the, the capacity issues that are out there. So we've kind of got two transportation issues that we're trying to deal with at the same time. The, so to me, if you look at it, while we don't have the money to complete the right-of-way acquisition currently, or even complete the design currently, much less construction, it's been my experience that as we get closer to having the projects ready to build, that when grant funds become available, we're able to take advantage of those. If the, if federal funds become available, we can take advantage of that much more quickly and, and a much more timely and ultimately lower cost way be able to proceed with the project. This is the exact pattern that we use for the Barnes Boulevard project. When we started that one, we didn't have anywhere near the money that was necessary to be able to complete that project, and today we do. The, so I don't want to say it's a policy decision. Do you, do you save money in the future by buying the land today, or do you go ahead and take care of road resurfacing or reconstruction needs today that are going to be to the advantage of the public now? It's, it's, it's a difficult call, I think. Prior boards had directed staff to go ahead and pursue this path with a limited amount of money, and we're getting close to the end of that, those funds that were allocated for that purpose. And we have acquired quite a few of the lots along Hollywood in that manner. All of them, basically all of them, very, very close to market value based on the appraisals that we got. And so I think we've saved a lot of money for the future and set ourselves up for a whole lot less acquisition when the time comes. But there's no doubt we could have spent it on, on resurfacing roads.
Floor recognizes Commissioner Pritchett.
Just a comment along that line.
The Chair.
I was speaking with a lot of constituents when we were running for office. I would talk to them about roads, and we have an understanding about repaving roads. But most of the time, when they were frustrated about roads, they would bring it up as problems of getting through traffic and, and the types of items you're talking about, getting bottlenecks. Our district is not so bad, but the rest of you guys got some real problem with, with traffic. So I, I think this is a good thing to do. I think we need to alleviate frustration in the traffic, so I, I'm, I'm going to be in favor of this.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Barfield.
Just have a question. When is, when do you anticipate this widening to occur?
It's, we really don't know. The, the funds to, to pay for it are currently not available. And as such, most of the grants that are available for it require matching funds, typically around 50%, unless you go federal funds, and then there's, right now, those funds aren't available for many, many years to go. The, so, but I would emphasize that when we have had projects that were ready to go or close to ready to go, we've been able to take advantage of grant funds that suddenly became available. What happens in a statewide basis is that if, say, TRIP funds, which is regionally important roadways that provide relief to major roadways, this one would provide relief, for example, to I-95. So DOT would, they want a 50% grant, you know, it's a 50-50 match on, on that grant. But one, at one point in time during the course of a year, there may be none of those funds available, and then suddenly funds become available. And the, in an unexpected and unanticipatable way. And an example of that is when we built the Pineda Extension, we got very, very good prices on that because of the economy was very aggressive bidding that took place on that. And we actually had to forego the use of, of a couple million dollars in grant funds from DOT. And so they got that money back and were able to allocate it to some other grant-benefited project. I don't know what project got it. It was not in Brevard County. I tried to get it into Brevard County, but I didn't succeed on that one. But the, so the monies do come available, and the need is clear. We do need it. But the, so the trick is, in my view, the trick is to try to be as close to ready to move forward as you can get, and then take advantage of the opportunity when it does arise. And I've seen this happen over and over again on project after project after project. Not just ours, by the way. There's some inside cities as well as DOT itself, who suddenly gets funds available that they didn't know were going to be.
John, what, what would you anticipate the funding source for the matching funds? Are you talking gas tax, local option gas tax, constitutional tax, or?
It could be constitutional, it could be local option gas tax, combination of the two. Impact fees would also be involved, or I'm sure the city of West Melbourne is very interested in this, and they've been a very active and cooperative partner, I think, in, in the past as far as helping to fund the improvements that we have already made on, on Hollywood. I think it's five intersections we've performed improvements on principally funded by impact fees. And the, the city of West Melbourne's been a very good partner in that process. So those are the three principal local sources of, of funds that would probably be applied to that.
Floor recognizes Commissioner Tobias.
Thank you. If, if this $121,000 is not expended on the purchase of this piece of property, then could it be used for resurfacing? And the further question there would be, as you were so kind enough to help explain the problem and show firsthand the problem to me, you said that as resurfing is not, resurfacing is not taken care of, the road denigrates to more than just the top layer, then we need to spend more and more and more resources. So I understand that this may save us money by purchasing this land at some future date that we don't know where the market is. But are we definitely certain that that savings outweighs the cost of us having to tear an entire road up because, you know, we're not resurfacing it immediately?
The typical ratio for reconstruction as compared to resurfacing is between five, four and seven times the, the value. And so the, if we were to apply the $121,000 to a road that was about to go to the point where we would have to reconstruct it instead of resurfacing it, and the alternative would be that it would fall into reconstruction type of mode, then, then you would leverage, thereby you'd be able to leverage that 121 into something on the order of, you know, between 500 and 700,000 or so.
So, and thank you for that good answer. Do you perceive that this $121,000 piece of property could cost county taxpayers at some time that $500,000 to $600,000, whether it be two years from now or five years from now, whenever we get the resources to, to widen Hollywood Boulevard? Or would it be more prudent to use those funds to avoid reconstruction if there are any roads that are to that standard right now?
If, in, in this particular case, it's residential property, which when you do eminent domain with residential property, you have to pay for relocation of the resident that's involved. And so it'd probably come out about even. And if, if, depending on how far out in the future is, it is, you know, it could easily exceed that. You know, if we were 10 years from now, then I'd expect that number, that, that relocation and, and acquisition cost to go up by whatever the market's doing, which is typically real estate's running somewhere around 4% to 8% in terms of values. I don't know what this particular piece of property would do. We've not analyzed it in that way.
I would like to weigh in on this. Listening to what you've had to say, and I think Commissioner Tobias brought up some good points. So from my perspective, my mother used to say penny wise and dollar foolish. So if we, if we were to turn our backs on the purchase of this property, and that also puts us behind in acquiring other properties, and the overall picture is we have to purchase a lot of properties to get this project done. So each property is like a building block, and the, the building gets stronger and stronger with each parcel that we, that we purchase or add to the wall. So I think from that point of view, I would support purchasing this property. Commissioner Isnardi?
I would just add too that with each, you know, either, either way that you decide on this issue, there's a domino effect. Because whether we purchase the property now, and you say that we have acquired most of that right-of-way.
We have not, I don't think we've acquired most of the right-of-way. We've acquired about, I, I think it's pretty close to half of the residential property that's, that's going to be.
Which is the biggest hurdle. Because that's assuming as well that we're not, that they don't fight the eminent domain. It's assuming that everybody's going to be okay with it, which chances are if they're not willing to sell the property, they're, they're more apt to fight us on that issue.
Correct.
And the failure to widen Hollywood results in more wear and tear on those other roads that we need to resurface. So like I said, each, each decision has an effect on, on the other. So I would support this only because I, I look to long-term, and I understand you only have to drive Hollywood with a little bit of traffic to know how bad it is over there. So just my two cents.
Mr. Denninghoff, would you say this is a life and death issue? Did you not tell me that people are having violent accidents on this because of the misalignment of?
On the, on the other one.
What's the other one?
2A5, that one is definitely a safety issue.
Okay.
And there are serious crashes that take place on that one. For, for this one, it's, it, no doubt we'll improve safety dramatically on Hollywood when we get it widened. This acquisition by itself won't accomplish that. But the, but one thing to think about is that being able to take advantage of the sources of revenue that may become available, I'm not sure what the time value is there because you don't know when it's going to happen or how much of it's going to happen. But I can, I can assure you that it, it also has sort of a domino effect. Because what happens is, is the, the draw on local revenues improves or gets better if you get these, these grants. And the, and then by doing that, you provide for concurrency, so you don't have permitting issues associated with construction and development. And, and obviously, as we were talking, mentioned, as was mentioned about the congestion and traffic, it saves people money and time as they travel each and every day. And that accumulates to a very large sum of money. By the way, I've done calculations on that, and it's surprising how much money is lost in congestion by, by the public.
Thank you, sir. Okay, pleasure of the board on 2A5.
I make a motion that we accept option 1 and 2A5.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have, we have a second by Commissioner Pritchett.
Can I throw in a discussion, though?
Absolutely.
Just, I'm hesitant because I do respect it because it's Mr. Tobias' district. So, but, Mr. Tobias, I think I'm hearing you saying that, that you're, you're just, you're still kind of weighing it, but, but you wouldn't be opposed to it because you're going to have it go through consent. Correct, sir?
Pleasure, the Chair.
You have the floor, sir.
Thank you. For a safety issue, 2A5 certainly is of importance for incidents that have happened there. Also, it's approximately 10% that of 2A6. So I strongly believe that the $12,125 should be allocated to deal with that as a safety issue. On 6, I think we, we have a choice to make as a board. This happens to be in the district that I represent, but, you know, there are reconstruction issues all across Brevard County. So when it, when it comes to, and resurfacing when it comes to roads. So I'm open to the pleasure of, of the board as to what direction that they want to go with that, especially since it's not a safety issue. And we've heard pretty eloquently on both sides that no matter how we use this, it is going to benefit the folks of, of Brevard County.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Barfield, a second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed, it passes 5-0. 2A6, pleasure of the board.
I'll make, make a motion to approve item number 2A6.
We have a motion by Commissioner Isnardi. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Passes 4-1. Commissioner Tobias is the nay. Okay, we move into public comments. Joseph Naughtie?
Joseph Naughtie. Joseph Naughtie. I'm sorry, you're, Joe, you're asking, you, you asked to speak.
Yes, I have a card, I have a card for Mr. Naughtie.
He's not able to hear very well because he's using a listening device. He's hearing, Joe, do you, do you?
He can't hear, but it's just.
Can you take it off, please? I'm sorry.
Arlene, Arlene, would you like to speak?
Yes. Are you?
Is that you?
Yes, are you prepared to speak? Are you prepared to speak? Camille, let's go. Camille will be next, right?
Yes.
So maybe step out together.
Sure.
Is he okay? Done. Okay.
Good morning. I am.
of the Blind, living in West Melbourne on Southwind Drive. I am the administrative assistant to the organization, whenever possible, providing transportation and assisting with communication. This morning, we brought with us some envelopes for each of you to tell you a little bit about our organization and to provide you with names of resources should you be contacted by people with vision loss or low vision. And we would welcome any contact that you might provide, and we might be of assistance. Our mission is to provide services, resources, and to help people locate those things. In your packets, you will see specifically for Brevard County, the names of organizations to which you may prefer to refer people. But if you're in doubt and you're not sure, certainly have them call us, and we will handle it expeditiously. We so appreciate the services that you have worked on last year, and we, our improved transportation has been wonderful. It has enabled people to get to important meetings, to reach doctors they weren't able to reach before. So with that said, welcome to the new members of the commission. We appreciate your service and the time and dedication you give to this very difficult job. Thank you.
Camille?
Here's the microphone. There you go. Camille Tate, Kemblewick Drive in Melbourne. I'd like to say welcome back, first of all, to Chairman Smith and Commissioner Barfield, and welcome to the newest members of the commission, Commissioners Isnardi, Pritchett, and Tobias. I'm on the Melbourne Space Coast Chapter's Board of Directors, and I have to say, we are one of the largest chapters of the blind, low vision, and sighted within the state of Florida. And one of our goals is the improvement of transportation. People don't, sometimes don't realize that the disabled, they work, they go to school, they have families, they live their lives. And one of our biggest obstacles to date has been transportation. Not that SCAD is a bad service, because actually it's great. The drivers are great, the staff at their two locations that we can call in and talk to are great. They just don't have the funding they need to meet all the needs of all the blind and low vision other disabled within Brevard County. As part of our mission this year, we're going to continue to work with the board and in the community itself to try and improve transportation, other services to our chapter members. Because one of the things that we believe is that we need to live the life that we want to live as a full member of society, both within Brevard County and without. And one of the things that I have to say, that I would like you all to take away from this, is that the NFB has a firm belief that blindness is not the characteristic that defines us or our future. That was actually a paraphrase. It's a longer statement. But I think that's the most important and powerful statement that the NFB can make to everybody out there, and it's one thing that our chapter fully believes in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Camille, if you just wait there, I'll take you. Joseph, you're at the podium.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Joseph B. Nalti. I live in West Melbourne on Southwind Drive. Yes, the Melbourne Space Coast Chapter has come a long way. When I moved here, there was no representation for the National Federation of the Blind. I found out that the county is 72 miles long, and my goal was to create a chapter and make awareness. I work with Talking Book Library out of Daytona. They sent me letters out that I had sent them to send out to the community, and they sent out 530 letters to blind people from Paineeta down to Malabar. That's only the south end of the county. That is only the people that are registered with Talking Book Library. I've talked with Vocational Rehab, I've talked with the State Division of Blind Services. They really don't have a good handle on how many blind people. The calculations that I've come up with, there's somewhere between 6,000 and 9,000 blind people in Brevard County. What we're trying to do is reach out. Our chapter is growing. As of the end of December, we had 63 paid members. We're into the new year, 2017, and we plan to grow and develop more. I personally have been a national officer, and I represent the deaf blind. I'm not only blind, but I'm half deaf. It's a compound thing. I thank you for the use of this device, that I can hear the Commissioner speak. Hearing aids are a problem. Cost of equipment that we need is not available. If you don't have a job, they don't buy it for you. We have to take it on our own social security to buy any equipment to compete with the technology of today. I want to thank you for this opportunity, for letting me be here and speak. Our team is growing, and we plan, thank you for the opportunity to use improved transportation. It's a big thing. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for this opportunity. Joseph B. Nalti.
Thank you, Mr. Nalti. I want to commend you too. I know you can't see the clock, but you did your speech right on time. And thank you, thank you very much for your input. Mr. Charles Tovey.
Hey, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Do you have the clock set on three, or is it looping over one?
Three.
Okay. That said, it was looping one at a time. Okay. It's the new clock.
Charles Tovey, 2555 Roberts Road, Melbourne, 32940. Got to start the clock. Merry Christmas, everybody, and I wanted to excuse myself for not including, welcome, Commissioner Isnardi, and I apologize, and don't want to include you with any kind of my disgruntledness or anything else. Welcome, and everybody deserves a chance. And we have a motto, you don't produce, we cut you loose. I still have my issues, and although there seems to be other settlers of Brevard County earlier than my family, that's fine. I go by what I've learned. Again, my name's Charles Tovey, other known as Lagoon Man, and regardless of anybody doing anything now, it's already too late, as well as the past eight years. I've already addressed all these issues that have been ignored. And now we have a problem, and no one wants to recognize me and my right to live. I'm struggling to survive on a daily basis. Why? So everybody else can have a job and drive down the road. Can't even have a cat. The only one cat I have left, after it was dragged down the road and left for dead, and my neighbors laugh at me while they don't have, and that's part of our problem, is nobody enforces the laws. No one gets tickets, no, and where does our money come from? The general funds. We're supporting everybody, all the general funds, so they don't have to do their jobs. Well, well, either way, the cat was dragged down the road, left for dead, and it was rigor mortis in my garage. I brought it back to life. Thank you, God, Jesus, my Savior. Anyways, I am a spiritual person, and I do believe different than other people. But I do have a right to live as well as anything else, and I can't even have a cat. Why? I've addressed these issues before, and I did save the lagoon. And I have found my legal files. They didn't destroy it. Well, like, I've lost everything. My right to live, everything I have, but I saved the lagoon. While everybody was hemming and hawing and giving away money for economic development, I'm out in the lagoon cleaning up for years with my sponsors, the Americans that care not only for Brevard but for America and the world. Everybody deserves a chance. Don't produce, we cut you loose. I don't know how much time I have left. It says 25, but I have a lot of other issues that I'd like to address as well. And they tried to burn me out of my house, and no one even gave me a smoke alarm afterwards. Why don't I fix my house? It's not that hard to fix, for one, and the arson, am I out of time yet? Anyways, you can't burn a house down twice, it's very difficult. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Tovey. Okay, that's all the public comments we have. Moving into new business, 6A1. Does staff have any comments on 6A1?
Good morning, Commissioner. Ted Kalkins. This is a request for the Board of County Commissioners to consider legislative intent and grant permission to advertise revisions to Chapter 62, Article 8, site plans. We would be proposing revisions that would streamline the process by incorporating the items that we found through the Lean Six Sigma analysis into the code, and we'd also be looking at providing some alternative parking standards.
Thank you. We have one card. Mr. Todd Prokrieva.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, good morning. A pleasure to be here this morning. First, I want to commend staff, especially the Lean Six Sigma DAP team, on beginning to implement some of the development review process improvements to streamline the approval process. It's important for Brevard County. It's important for our county to compete with surrounding jurisdictions, the state, and nationally for opportunities. And time is the enemy of all opportunities, so this county needs to be better at the site plan and subdivision approval process than any other jurisdiction. The Viera Company supports proposed revisions to streamline the site plan process and modifications to the parking requirements of the site plan code in order to allow for consideration of alternative development standards. There needs to be more flexibility, practicality, and certainty in the process. So it's wise that staff has brought this forward and that the county commission is considering it. By way of example, the code with respect to multifamily development requires two parking spaces per unit and one space per five units of guest parking. Staff has recognized that the code is more restrictive than many other counties and just the practical implementation of apartment developments. The example in another county, Charlotte County, requires 1.5 spaces per unit. And some additional information that's of value comes from the Institute of Transportation Engineers. The fourth edition of Parking Generation Manual presents standards for residential use on the land use code most applicable to multifamily development in this county for low and mid-rise apartments. The IT data, based on 68 studies, found an average weekday parking demand of 1.2 spaces per unit. The land use code for that particular item in the manual found 1.2 spaces per unit for urban sites, 1.23 spaces for suburban sites, as being the parking spaces per dwelling unit. The average in these parking studies are based on empirical data, and then there are studies in Parking Management Best Practices, a publication by Todd Lipman in 2006. It establishes a standard for multifamily housing of 1.5 spaces per dwelling unit. So there is an opportunity here to provide more flexibility as to what's practical, and I really am appreciative of staff's efforts in bringing forward these proposed changes to the site plan approval process and potentially providing for alternative development standards to be addressed when it pertains to parking requirements. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Pleasure of the board.
Move to approve. One second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Pritchett. Commissioner Isnardi seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes 5-0. Moving on to 6A2.
Okay, this is a request for the Board of County Commissioners to consider legislative intent and grant permission to advertise for revisions to Chapter 62, Article 7 subdivisions. This is a companion to the site plans. We would be looking at proposing changes that would streamline the development process by incorporating the changes of the Lean Six Sigma identified through their analysis. And we'd also be looking at removing the requirement for preliminary Platts and final engineering to obtain board approval. By removing this step, we would be adding, or I should say, taking out about 15 to 21 days out of the development process for the developers.
Thank you, Ted. We have a couple of requests for speaking. Jim Stone. Would you give us your full name and your address, please?
Jim Stone, 1410 Island Drive, Merritt Island, Florida, 32952, United States of America, now under President Donald Trump. Thank heavens. I want to first of all congratulate the new members of the commission, and I have a particular folder for each of you.
Absolutely.
Oh, wait, I gave you two.
Let's say left. You've got a dollar bill on it.
Yeah. USA Today, thank you.
I get nervous, somebody give me something that says a dollar bill.
And hold on tight. What I gave you is a package from a year and a half ago that I brought to this commission, and I thought you might want to enjoy it. I didn't bother to bring other copies because I have no evidence from anywhere, including USA Today, where I took a copy straight from this office to the editor and handed it to him personally. Got no response from anybody on it other than a short response from Commissioner Barfield. So in any case, or your administrator, she shared that with you. Thank you. Any case, you might want to read it, and of particular interest might be one of the final pages in the front part, which lists a summary of the United States Constitution. It says what the three articles are, and then ask a question. As in Article 1, it says, are you the legislative body of Brevard County? Yes or no? Are you the administrative body of Brevard County? Yes or no? Are you the judicial body of Brevard County? Yes or no? If you answered those three of the affirmatives, you're following the footsteps of three nations that do not exist. So you're in a precarious position, and I can only advise you, you got to be careful because this country's headed down a path we don't need to be following. And it's identified in that package as Agenda 21, as presented to the United Nations, approved by George Bush. But thank God, our legislative body says, hey, that's socialism. We don't want that. Any case, I come to you because I put in a development. It took me four years to get my development approved. I had to submit drawings over and over and over again at great expense. It entirely wiped out my retirement. I had to submit surveys. I had to endure meeting after meeting with the same people over four years, coming back to the table with new questions. Aren't they competent enough to be able to answer those questions or ask them in the first meeting, so I didn't have to repeat this? Now, in any case, I wasn't a happy camper when it's done because I watched companies like Polte come in, they get their approvals in 30 days in their building. I'm still out there fighting paperwork. So you've got a lot of things to think about as you look through your county structure because there is no check and balance on groups like that. And as I'm going to come back under this ethics question, it's a wide open door. That's basically what I wanted to interject here, as you talk about site reviews, development plans, things like that. A good example, my good friend Charlie Chrisifoli, I should say deceased now, would That's basically what I wanted to interject here, as you talk about site reviews, development plans, things like that. A good example, my good friend Charlie Chrisifoli, I should say deceased now, would come to me week after week, month after month, Mr. Stone, what can I do? I said, Charlie, I don't want to get involved. Friends of mine are in the approval process, leave me out of it. I finally got involved at the end, much to my dismay. I don't want to quit on time so you don't chase me out of here. Do I have time?
You have a minute. 53 seconds, to be exact.
Do you have any questions while I'm on it? Because I can go on for hours. Anybody that knows me, there's no slowing me. No questions? I'll see you in a few minutes when we get to ethics.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Pleasure, the board.
I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Pritchett. We have a second. Second by Commissioner Isnardi, and we do have some discussion. Chair recognizes Commissioner Barfield.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, both of these legislative intents, first, I just want to talk about that we are doing lean six sigma, and out of that, we are finding things within the county where we can do things better. And these both are examples of that, which save time, which time equals money. So these are, excuse me, these are a great start for the future, and Mr. Witten, I'm just very pleased that we're doing this.
Can I make a comment, too?
Absolutely.
I would just like to throw in that I'm really glad we're doing these types of projects also. We did them in the city of Titusville, and it just changed our whole ability to do business. And I've actually requested during the briefing we went through that you guys might come quarterly and share one of the projects with us, you know, maybe every once in a while on a basis. I think it'd be good for the community to see it and the types of projects we're taking on, and saving days from customer frustration is great, the money. I'm just really proud of you guys doing this, and I think it would be good for us to see exactly what you're going through and the outcome of what we're doing with these projects.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Isnardi.
Yeah, again, I'd like to reiterate what Ms. Pritchett said, a thank you, staff, for taking the time and effort to do this because I think that, you know, we have to be smart when we look at any sort of development to make sure of its impacts on neighborhoods and the environment. However, I think that we also need to be open and friendly, and oftentimes, it was never somebody, when I was a council member in the city of Palm Bay, it was never somebody that came to me wanting a special privilege or a special thing. They usually, their biggest complaint was time. They're being held up in permitting, they're being held up with, you know, with inspections or however, whatever the complaint was, it was usually a time issue for them because for an investor, time is money. So anything we can do to expedite this process, I'm very excited about. And I also, you know, since this item came up and when I first took office, I was told that this county manager was also in the process of doing a builder's roundtable. So I'd be real interested if it's, you know, okay with the commission, if one of us, and I'd love to be the one that attends that roundtable, rather than there be any conflict with more than one of us wanting to attend. I'd love to attend that when we set that up with the building community.
Thank you, duly noted.
I was going to bring it up during council, or during commission business, but might as well bring it up now, now's as good a time as any.
Chair recognizes Mr. Witten.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank the commissioners for the comments on lean six sigma. We were actually very proud of that process. We actually have been having the developers' roundtables, meetings for almost a year. We do them quarterly. The next one is coming up on February 17th, I think it is, somewhere in there. And we're actually going to go over some lean six sigma projects in there. We're going to go over the proposal that perhaps not this board, but the last board received on the land development regulations there. And so, and that's, again, an informal meeting, county manager, staff, developers, just sitting around the table, talking about how we can improve the process and, obviously, time is, again, money for the developers, but also protect the public as we do that. So the next one is coming up very soon, and we have about three or four areas of discussion on that.
Unless I hear any objections from my fellow commissioners, I would suggest that Commissioner Isnardi, you attend the next meeting, and if any of the other commissioners wish to attend one of the meetings, we can just rotate. Does that work for you? Okay, so 6A2, we have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, a second by Commissioner Isnardi. Anyone wish to vote no? Pass is 5-0. 6A3.
Commissioners, 6A3 is an approval of a proposed grant of aerial support temporary construction and drainage easement in and over Pine Street to All Aboard, Florida, and that's in District 1. The thing that I believe we should draw your attention to is Exhibit C, which is the second to the last page in your packet. And those are the considerations that are under your consideration for the conveyance of the aerial easement. And as I understand, there was a contribution of 150 and then a not to exceed cost amount of 500, and I think John has had some discussions with the applicant on that not to exceed amount, and they may cover that themselves. But again, this is the consideration of an aerial easement over Pine Street for All Aboard, Florida.
Mr. Denninghoff, do you have anything to add?
Just that we have, through various communications with All Aboard, Florida, we've assured that there's enough space under the proposed overpass over Pine Street to accommodate future sidewalks and piping of drainage and the typical types of things that we would expect to be able to provide in a neighborhood like that in the future. So we've assured that is there. So the central issues seem to be about the, that remain, I think, from a technical perspective, seem to be about the pedestrian crossings on the sides of five different roadways in the county and the, and then the cost associated with providing those crossings. I would say that the, those five crossings, the road crossings, would then have a maximum of 10 pedestrian crossings, one on either side of the road, and the three of those are already proposed by All Aboard, Florida, in their plans, leaving five still in question.
Mr. Chair, I apologize, at our briefing on yesterday, I think you requested that the last sentence in the second paragraph be modified to read, applicant shall provide written notice with itemized expenditures for each of the sidewalk improvements to the County Public Works Director upon completion of all the sidewalk improvements.
That is correct. What my concern here is to my fellow commissioners, the way it's written now, they could just submit a bill and we would be responsible for it. And to me, it's almost like an open-ended opportunity for them to just say, it costs this much money. So this sentence would require them to provide us with an itemized bill so that Mr. Denninghoff and his staff can look at it, discern that it was accurate, and we would be responsible for those numbers. And I have one speaker, Laura Young.
Good morning, Chairman Smith and fellow commissioners. Thank you for your time this morning. My name is Laura Young. I work at the law firm of Dean Mead at 738 Morel Road, Suite 200, Viera, Florida, 32940. We represent All Aboard, Florida, and we're here today to help answer any questions and give you some additional information that we've talked with and went over with Mr. Witten and also John Denninghoff as early as this morning. I know it's in your packet, but if you will give me just a few seconds, I'll briefly explain to you what it is we're asking for and why. We have four easements in the area of Pine Street that are needed for the high-speed rail to come over Pine Street. The first and most important, obviously, is the aerial bridge easement over Pine Street. In addition to that, we need two support easements where the actual structures will be to support the bridge. We also need a very small drainage easement to the south of that, where the runoff from the bridge will drain. And additionally, we need a temporary construction easement that is to the north and to the south of that to allow us to construct it. Your staff and council have done an amazing job to get an easement document that protects the county in as many ways possible. We have requirements to go through the county for any road impediments. We're not allowed to impede the road without the county's approval. During construction and maintenance, there is a provision in the easement that if the easement's abandoned for any reason after consecutive three years, the county can terminate it unilaterally. The reason why the county is able to do it, and I know Mr. Witten has probably advised you all of this, but under Section 2.247 under the code, there is a provision that allows the county to grant easements, sell property, enter into leases, when it is, obviously for the best interests of the county, for a public purpose, to serve a public function, something that the county or the federal government or other local governor, state government could do, but a private entity is willing and able to do it for you. So we fit under all of the provisions of that code and the Florida statutes to come before you and ask for these easements. I know there's been a lot of discussion between, you know, last fall and today about the consideration for that, and I know that's probably the most important thing to spend the majority of our time talking about. I know the Clark client has offered to pay for consideration $150,000 for the easement rights. In their own research and their own workings within Brevard County and other areas, there have been several other similar type easements, either for them or for others, where that value is definitely supported, if not more. So we believe that the value of the easement is, Brevard County is getting a good deal on that. In addition to the cash consideration, which of course is very important, our client has agreed to construct with the approval of the county. The county has to approve all the plans, the budget, everything, five specific sidewalk improvements over the railway crossings, over the roads that John had mentioned, over one side of the road. And we have gone with our engineers and our design team and come up with our own budget for what we think that could be today, and we have an itemized budget for each one of the roads, and it's truly just an estimate. It is not construction costs because those have not obviously been able to be provided or done because this isn't going to happen for about 18 to 24 months from now. But that cost is about $45,000 to $50,000 per sidewalk improvement, so approximately about $280,000, which I know exceeds the $500,000 that was initially offered. But the reasoning for that, at least from our perspective, was in case there were other improvements that the county wanted to provide for additional sidewalk improvements because originally there were some other roads that were included, but now they're not, that that cap would allow the county to do that. But we understand the concern with the disparity between $300,000 and $500,000 and the county possibly being on the hook for more money than it was anticipating. So we're prepared to lower that number. But we do feel very strongly that the current estimate right now, which we've discussed with John, and I know you guys haven't seen those numbers, but is about $300,000 today. So we've added on about a cushion, and we think realistically, we could get that number down to 350 as a cap, which I understand might still be some concern, and we can talk about that. But the one thing to remember is that All Aboard, while they're in there in the quarter doing their own work, they're going to be building these sidewalks for the county at cost, probably, I'm not, you know, an expert on this, but probably anywhere from half the cost that it normally would have been if the county had to do it themselves because of the timing and who's doing it. And able to get some of the permissions to get things moved along quicker than maybe the county would otherwise be able to. So that is definitely an intrinsic value and should be considered as part of the consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Any questions from the board for Ms. Young?
I have a question. You mentioned, excuse me, the cost of, the estimated cost of doing these improvements to the intersections. Your folks, you mentioned $45,000 to $50,000 per, and our Mr. Denninghoff is estimating about $25,000 to $30,000, so there's a big disparity there. If we split the difference, we'd be somewhere around $40,000. Thereabouts, 37.5, so. And I understand you're not going to start construction right away, so that you're trying to cushion, and I understand, that's business, you're trying to cushion the fact that inflation can come along and take a bite out of this. But I think it's a little bit, I don't want to use the word disingenuous because that might be a little bit too strong, but it stretches the imagination that we can be looking at inflation that would be 30% over 18 months. So I'm happy that you guys have come down to 350. I think 300 would be a more appropriate number. If we're going to reimburse you for the work, the whole idea of having you guys do the work was that it would be the same price. It would be cheaper to have you do it while the construction was going on, rather than to have us come back and do it later. So that if it was, in fact, with $25,000 when it's being done, it very well could be $50,000 if we had to go in and do it after you finished. So I'm finding it very difficult how it can be $50,000 when you're doing it as you go. But again, if you're going to provide us with itemized
Yes, we will. We have no problem with doing that.
Details, then, yeah, I don't have a problem with that either.
We'll do the itemized details, and all of the plans for the construction of these improvements, including the budget, all has to be approved by Brevard County and gone through that whole process and checks and balances to make sure they're doing it as economically as possible. Truly, we want to do it for the right price. You guys want to do it for the right price. We don't want to pay for any more than is necessary, so we're on the same side in terms of trying to make it as economical and efficient as possible.
Right, and that's my point. I want everybody to understand that we're partners in this. This is not something that you guys are going to dictate to us or vice versa. We want it to be treated fairly, and I'm sure you want to be treated fairly as well. Thank you. If you have anything else you would like to add?
No, just that I resonate that comment, Commissioner Smith, about it being a partnership. This kind of progress requires a significant partnership, and I am personally extremely excited that Brevard County gets to participate in that.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts? I have no other questions. Anyone else on the board have questions? No? Thank you very much. Pleasure, the board. Chair recognizes Commissioner Pritchett.
We did a lot of negotiations. I've been kind of watching this as it's been maturing here to this process. You really believe we could do half the sidewalks for $35,000 each sidewalk?
We had, I had drawn back on a former lifetime as to having done a lot of consulting work, which resulted in construction across the railroads, and the, and I had come up with a rough estimate of frankly, between about $25,000 and $50,000 to be able to build both sides as a marginal increase in cost. Now, that would mean that the expenses associated with a project, the maintenance of traffic, the flaggers, and some of the other work that would be done on a project was already going to be done. So it'd just be the additional materials that would have to be constructed as opposed to a pro-rata share for the whole crossing. So I don't know, I haven't had a chance to review the estimates that, or seen any detailed estimates associated with their proposed crossings. The, I will say that at $50,000, it still seems a little bit high to me, but I also know that I'm operating with a bit of a handicap at this point without modern, recent information. I did account for inflation when I figured between 25 and 50. So I'm at about half of what they are saying the per-side crossing is. Without the detail, I can't tell you or dissect, examine the, what the differences are and why they're there. I will say that it's a much more reasonable number at this point than the $500,000 was, and so I'm happy to see that. And if, you know, when we get a detailed estimate, I'd be happy to tear into that and start dissecting it and come up with an opinion about it, but right now, I just don't have that information.
Okay, I had a real problem with the $500,000. I wasn't sure what I was going to do with it, but Commissioner Smith, I think I could agree to splitting it and supporting $300,000. could agree to splitting it and supporting $300,000 for the amount reimbursed with the $150,000 to be given to the city, county. I'm sorry, I'm so used to city still, given to the county. I, I think I could, I could support your proposal, sir, so.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Tobias.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for clearing that up, Mr. Denninghoff. My question was, before we even deal with costs, do we, do we have any research as far as the need for these sidewalks, as far as how many folks are crossing these presently, or what the future usage of these corridors will be?
We do not have a, a data base to, to indicate the number. We do have evidence of the, of the folks that are walking across because they have beat down the grass and, you know, it's, it's, there's a lot of indications of how many people are there. We have had incidents where pedestrians have had, there's been crashes with cars with pedestrians where they were in the, the railroad crossing. There hadn't been much with, with the train, which is, I guess, good news. So there's a lot of indication about that. Additionally, the, in, inside of the cities in particular, the Sarno Road, Dixon, and Michigan, the cities have been making improvements to build sidewalks. And in the case of Michigan, they've actually built a sidewalk right up to the railroad right-of-way. But getting across the railroad is a formidable and very costly task, and so they stopped at the road right-of-way, the railroad right-of-way on, on the east side of, or excuse me, the west side of Michigan. So, or the west side of the railroad tracks at Michigan. And so while we don't have a study, we certainly have lots of evidence indicates pedestrian needs, and it's clearly a safety improvement for, for that, so, for pedestrian use.
So, a brief follow-up. So taking off the hat that you currently work, wear, working for the government, if you were back in the, the real private side of things, would you make a recommendation to a private organization, or better yet, a public organization to, to this county that they need to spend somewhere in the neighborhood of, goodness gracious, whether we dropped it from $500,000 to $300,000 for sidewalks with what sounds to be anecdotal evidence to me? Would you make that recommendation?
If we have evidence that there's pedestrians that are using the facility, I'm going to tell you that it's a safety issue, and I would tell you from a liability perspective, if you don't provide for those citizens to be able to get across, there's certainly potential for a liable, a lawsuit that could be generated there. And from that cost perspective, I would say that you're probably going to be ahead to go ahead and provide the facilities. I would also tell you that in more and more of the locations, we are routinely getting requests by people who are challenged in some sort of physical way, whether it's blindness or, or in a wheelchair or some other form of, of disability. Under the ADA, we're required to provide them certain types of improvements. So all of these would comply with the ADA standards in addition to providing safety just for the, the, I'll say the average.
Before the chair gives the Florida Commissioner Barfield, I would remind Commissioner Tobias that our exposure would not be $300,000, it would be 150, because All Aboard Florida is going to give us $150,000. Commissioner Barfield?
Yeah, enlightened of the recent rankings is Brevard County is the number two ranked MPO in the, in the country for pedestrian deaths. I think it's very, very important that every issue we deal with in construction, we make that as a priority to look at how we can reduce the pedestrians, deaths of pedestrians in this county. But I do have a question. I, I may be missing something here. In Exhibit C, we talked, well, it mentions Barnes Boulevard, but then in Exhibit C, in list of crossings, it doesn't have Barnes Boulevard in there, yet it does later on. Is, is Barnes Boulevard included?
The, early on in the negotiations, Barnes Boulevard was included on the list. And in recognition of the current lack of pedestrians that actually do cross at Barnes, we recognize that in the future, it, it will occur. We've recently had a, the Brackenwood subdivision has just built to the, to the west side of the railroad tracks, and there is an existing community on the east side of the railroad tracks, back along River Road and Coquina. The, and so we do anticipate that there's going to be pedestrians there. We now don't see that, and so for that reason, we dropped Barnes off the list. I would back that up by suggesting that eventually, when the grade crossing at Barnes would have to be reconstructed, that, that would probably occur before we would probably be in a position to, to actually have much in the way of pedestrians that are there. Likewise, on, so that's the Barnes situation, so we just dropped that out. So instead of 12 crossings, we'd have 10 accepted on Miko Road. I want to clarify one thing that I said earlier, Miko Road and Barefoot Boulevard, we originally had two at those locations. The All Aboard Florida plans and the FRA did not result in the requirement for pedestrians at those locations because we didn't have the actual facilities right there. The, but we, so we, we've said, well, we should probably have at least one, and so that's two out of the five that we were talking about. The other three that are on the list, they're Sarno, Dixon, and Michigan. Their plans do include placing one crossing at those locations, one side. And so what we're proposing is to add a second one at those locations. So we would add one going from zero to one at Miko, from zero to one at Barefoot Boulevard, and then from one to two on each of Sarno, Dixon, and Michigan, for a total of five that would be added by the request of the county.
My question is, and I'm, I'm certainly okay if we want to lower this reimbursement cap for sidewalks, but isn't realistically, isn't the number, for lack of a better term, arbitrary? Because I mean, if we're going to do our due diligence at the county, any bills that are submitted or any kind of reimbursement obviously would require some itemized, itemization, and, and, you know, you're going to protect the county at all costs. I have a hard time thinking that everybody's in cahoots to pay All Aboard Florida or anybody more money than what, what the cost of the job is. Now, like I said, I'm certainly okay with lowering that amount if it gives comfort to this board. However, I want to make sure also too that, you know, if, God forbid, if there's some sort of drainage issue, if there's some sort of issue where the costs would exceed that amount for whatever reason, I mean, obviously, they would have the opportunity to come back to the board and request us to bump up that number if need be.
No. The, I'm glad you asked that, or the, the not to exceed number is just that. If it goes above the number for any reason, then All Aboard Florida would absorb that difference. That's why they're interested in, in having the number a little bit above what they estimate the cost is, so that they can cover any, any unforeseen issues that might come up at this point, or the inflationary effects of, by the time they get to the construction. So, because they haven't developed the plans to do that, they can't produce an actual construction cost estimate, so it's more of a planning level estimate that they have right now. But in order to give the county clarity as to what the top end, you know, what the upper limit of what we would be exposed to, or whatever our exposure would be, the, the not to exceed number is being provided for that. So the question is, is how, what number are you comfortable with, and, and then can they live with that number?
And in your professional opinion, you don't believe that it could ever go above that, $300,000?
It, without the plans, I can't tell you what the, what the cost would be. Could it go above that? I suppose it could, depending on other issues that might exist on a site-specific basis. I, I don't think so. The, I don't believe that it's going to do that. So I think they're safe. The, and so I believe if it was at 350, or, and I'm more optimistic than they are because it's their risk at 300, I think that they're still going to be okay. But, but, but I just can't tell you, I can't give you a professional opinion as to what the cost would be, because there's just not enough information available, at least not to me, to, to be able to give a professional opinion about what that cost is going to be.
And I, and I completely understand. I mean, obviously, we're always going to look for, us as the government, doing business with the private sector, to always look for the best deal for us because, you know, we're scraping pennies just to get little things done as far as we go. But I'm concerned because we're already, in any private business, I don't care if it's, you know, if it's a bait shop that's asking, you know, anything in front of this board, we're paying three times the amount what the property's worth as far as, nearly three times the amount as far as appraised value for this easement as it is. So we're already beating them down there. I just want to be careful not to, I want to be fair, I guess is the best way to say it, to anybody. I don't care if it's All Aboard Florida who's obviously, you know, can afford to absorb those costs. We're also asking for a lot too, because this number on this property originally was $300,000. You know, we were going to give them the easement for $300,000. That was where we were negotiating before. So the fact that we've cut that in half is, is at least us saying we're good partners in this, because this is their, their private railway, and we have to be good partners too. And I think that, again, I, I'm okay with lowering that amount, I just don't want to, I just don't want to do bad business, if that makes sense.
Mr. Witten?
Commissioners, and so they, they have come down to 350. I think the chairman said 300, and so if you were to split based on this morning's negotiations, it would be 325. And so maybe that's a number that's acceptable to both sides.
Commissioner Pritchett.
I, I'm, I'm good with that, and All Aboard Florida's shaking their head too, so I'm not sure that I need to make another comment. I was just going to remark that if, if we had a stop, we would have some more increased revenues that would pay these types of things. My only concern, just I throw that out to you too, is that we don't cost any of the taxpayers additional funds for your project. I'm excited about your project, but I think fast train, increased risk at crossings, I think we do have to get crossings, whereas if you weren't putting in the fast train, we probably wouldn't have to accelerate that project now. So that's why I really want these, these types of costs covered with your project. But again, if, if everybody's comfortable at Mr. Witten's proposal, and I'm thinking everybody is, and then I, I think we might have it all solved.
I'm going to weigh in here. I'm not comfortable with three and a quarter, just simply because I understand your concerns, but you also have concerns about spending counties' money. What you're doing is you're increasing our exposure to 325 or 350. 300, we limit our exposure to $150,000. If you feel comfortable going another $25,000, they've invested, I can't even tell you how many billions of dollars. So for them, it's, not to make light of it, but it's pennies. For us, it's a big deal, so.
See, and where I'm concerned is that's often the mentality, like when we get sued as a government, we have the deepest pockets. You know, we have a business that comes and wants to do business, and we say to them, well, I'll give you an example. I mean, and I, I'm not going to say the name because I don't want to put any of their personal, I don't want to bring them back in the newspaper, put it that way, but we had physicians that were opening up in our city, and we said, well, since you're all doctors, you know, never mind that you're all paying student loans and you're all young doctors, what was left out of the discussion was that they're going to make him build an eight-foot masonry wall because, where they're going to exceed the, you get my point. I mean, I don't want to get too far in the weeds with it, and I'm okay with that, but we would only be exposed if those bills weren't correct, or if they're, if they're itemized bills. I mean, I, like I said, we're not just going to write a check and say we're going to pay for these sidewalks.
Exactly. That's why, that's why we're suggesting that we limit our exposure. So
Right.
I'll leave it up to you guys. But I will also remind you before we take a vote, as I understand it, this is, requires a supermajority. Is that correct?
Okay, so that means four of the five have to approve this, or it goes south. Mr. Barfield?
Can we just, can we talk with them? Let them tell us where they're at?
Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate it, and I truly appreciate the discussion that you're willing to have today. We, of course, we think our numbers are, might be a little bit more accurate than John's, that we're pretty close to that $300,000 today. We're willing to agree on a $300,000 cap if we have the right, which I thought we did, but it sounds like we don't, to come back to the county and say, look, it ended up costing 325. Can we increase that cap? Because I have seen changes be made to caps like that prior to this, but if John's saying that's not an option, then we really, to, to fund that and capitalize that, not knowing what those true costs are going to be, they could be $500,000. Let's hope not. Nobody's thinking it's going to be, but we definitely are more comfortable leaving the cap at 350. We can't, we can't ask you to build something you're not agreeing to, to build, you know, to pay for that. You're going to have all the checks and balances, you're going to have the itemized, we're going to build it right into the resolution, the itemized costs with all the invoices, and you're going to have a say all along the way, before, during, and after. And if there's a problem and there's a dispute, you don't pay us. I mean, that's ultimately what happens. But we could agree on a 325. You know, our preference would be to keep it at 350 without a look back. We don't get to come back to county. We eat the rest. If it costs more than that, at $300,000, we would like to come back to the county and say, look, it costs 310, it costs 325, whatever it's going to be, and have that opportunity to come before you again and explain and show, if necessary, what the actual costs were. But we would be willing and able to live with 325, if that's what sounds like is going to make the board comfortable. We want to go away successful today, as well as I'm sure you guys do too.
Thank you. Pleasure, the board. Mr. Tobias?
It seems like not only is there constructionary costs concerns, on top of that, there's inflation that's, that, that is out there, and I don't know, there's got to be some index for construction inflation out there. Is there a way to set it at that 300 or that 325 and put in a, an index that takes into account, obviously, the various cost of materials, that we don't know what they'll be at 18 or 24 months down the road? And I don't know if that question goes to Mr. Denninghoff or, you know, or Mr. Knox, but is that something that, you know, would meet us closer to the middle and, and get this up for, you know, consideration?
Commissioners, if you will, I, I would say that yes, I'm sure we could make, construct language within the agreement that would, that would assign some sort of a potential escalator or indexing at, in some way. That would of course involve having to decide which index you would use, and, and then you, and whenever I've done one of those before, we still wound up putting in a not-to-exceed number on top of that regardless. And, and by the way, the, the reason I say it was not to exceed is the, the language, the operative sentence is in the middle of that, the larger paragraph there. It says, "The county shall reimburse applicant for the cost of the sidewalks up to the amount of," and then it says $500,000. The, and then it has a timeframe as to when we would do that. The, so that's why I was saying it wouldn't go above the number, so.
Yeah, I don't think we're, there's no, any point in dancing around the fact that you want to come up with a number, and that's what you're going to live with. That's what they're going to live with. So to, to complicate things, muddy the water, and put in wheres and ifs this happened, and if it exceeds this, or, I, I think it's counterproductive.
I'm not used to pressing this button still after two, three meetings, but I'll get used to it. I'm used to just piping in when there's a break, so excuse me if I do that. But, I mean, obviously, you're right, you're correct. I think that All Aboard said that they were comfortable at 350. We talked about 325. I think finding that number so they can move forward is probably the best bet, so I'd be okay with that. Again, I want to reiterate, if the, and I wouldn't say, I wouldn't suggest obviously at this point, leaving it at the 500, but if, if they've got to submit the itemized construction costs, I don't know how, it's not like they're going to automatically get $500,000 from the county because they say it costs that much.
Well, here's, let me
And I understand how the cap works. I'm not stupid. What I'm saying is, is I think that we have to be reasonable as well, and we have to be good partners, and we have to say, because then, God forbid, if it does go above the 350, well, then guess what? They are going to absorb the cost. But again, they're already paying nearly three times the amount what the appraised value of that easement is. An easement that we'll probably do nothing with ever. So, I mean, they're already being good partners there. And again, I'm, I have no reason to advocate one way or the other. I mean, I'm advocating for the taxpayer, and I want to be a good partner, and I want to I mean, I'm advocating for the taxpayer and I want to be a good partner and I want to do good government. So that's just my two cents and I wanted to offer my opinion to the Board.
Commissioner Pritchett.
Maybe it would be better just to get 300,000 paid at closing and then we just do it, not have them do any of the work, then there wouldn't be any risk to all aboard Florida.
Well, the problem with that is then the cost does go up because now you're going in and you're redoing it or you're doing it, you're adding to the cost. The cheapest way to do it is to do it during the construction. They're the contractors, so the cheapest way to do it is for them to do it as they progress. If we go back and do it before, do it after, it escalates. So we're trying to negotiate the best deal for the county and they've agreed to help us out there and do it while they're, the question that we have to decide on is how much exposure do we want to limit the county taxpayers? It's going to get done. They've agreed to do it. We've agreed to help them do it. They've agreed to kick in 150 grand in cash upfront. The only question is, what kind of exposure do we want going forward? So the pleasure of the Board.
I like the 300,000. And the reason I do is because, once you get into the estimates, when you all start estimating in refined detail, you'll know where you stand. But I would do the 300,000 where they could actually come before us again if they want to increase that, with complete evidence upfront, just like you do in a contractor. You have a contractor go out for estimate, they come back with their estimates, you negotiate on that. At this point, I think they're going to go down to the lowest level they can on their estimating. They come back to us. If it's over, then we have to make that decision at that point. So I'd like to make a motion that we set the number from 500,000 to 300,000. And with that motion, they have to do a detailed estimate upfront and detailed afterwards invoicing. At any point in that where it appears they're going to go over, they can come before the county commission again and we can adjust that.
Well, except that if we do that, then we might as well not even have a number. Just let them just go do it.
I'd rather say that's the cap and when they go over.
It's not a cap.
If they go over 300, they have the option to come to us and then we make a decision.
Okay. Well, here's my problem with that. If that were to occur and we disagree with them, now we could be getting involved with attorneys and lawyers and you said and she said and we agreed to, but we don't agree now. And so then when we get a lawyer involved, lawyers, no offense to any attorneys here, but you see where I'm going with that?
I do.
If you have a cap, you have a cap and just leave it at that. So if you're not comfortable with 300, make it bigger, but to leave that door open.
The reason I'm saying this is, number one, let's be reality here. You all need that. That's it. You all need that for your use. You're going to work with us. It's not like it's an option. They need it.
Well, of course, they need it. They need it. That's not in question.
So the point is.
They're not going to Orlando unless they get this parcel. So it's up to us to decide what that parcel is going to cost them. And at this point, my suggestion would be to just make a hard number. They had a hard number at 500. I personally think that's absurd. So now we're coming down to either 300 or 325. They said that they would be willing to work with either one, but they'd be happier with 325. So it's up to you guys to make that decision.
I make the motion then, if you want to do it that way? I make the motion at 300,000 and with a detailed itemized invoice.
Commissioner Nardi? You've already spoken.
I think I understand what you're trying to do, Commissioner Barfield, but I think the idea of the cap, you could set the limit at 350 with an amount not to exceed X amount of dollars, provided they have evidence. I mean, that's sort of a convoluted way to do it, but the cap, otherwise the sky's the limit and they could potentially come back with something really crazy and spend uber amounts of money because they just need the majority. I'm not saying that they would get it, but either way, we have to finish the sidewalks. So I think that that's a bit of the predicament we get in and we do have to have a cap. What we agree upon, I guess, is where we're at, so what we're comfortable with. I mean, because either way, if it does say exceed 300 or 350, they absorb those costs. I mean, so I think just coming up with a cap, I think, is probably the safest bet without, it doesn't add so much drama to the issue.
Yeah, let's not muddy the waters. Let's not leave too much out there because attorneys will say, well, you know, the intent was, well, the five people here's intent was what? And just find a cap that you're comfortable with.
Okay. Get moving here. Let's just do a 325 cap.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Barfield for a cap of 325.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Tobias. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass is 5-0. Congratulations.
Mr. Chair, can your motion also include authorization to amend any of the documents to match your action taken today? Because I think we still have some work to do on the documents, the resolutions, et cetera.
Absolutely. Can I have a motion to do that?
Yeah, just add that to my motion.
Can we do that? Okay. Then it's done. Hooray. Okay, moving right along.
Mr. Chairman, this is a request to hold a public hearing on February 7th, being made in behalf of the folks who are trying to finance through a federal, through a state program. And as a local government who has jurisdiction over Brevard County, they have to come before you in order to get tax-exempt financing. That's why the public hearing is required.
Do we need a motion on that?
You do.
Okay. Can I have a motion for holding a tougher public hearing on February 7th?
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nardi. Anyone wish to vote no? Pass is 5-0. 6D. Mr. Knox, do you want to?
This is a revision to the letter credit. I think we're reducing it because they have completed certain amount and been paid for.
So do you need any action by us?
Just approve the reduction.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the reduction?
Motion to approve reduction.
We have a motion by Commissioner Nardi. Second by?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass is 5-0. 4-0. Sorry. My ghost got away from me.
Did you break? Is that what you said?
Okay, let's go to 6F1. Pending VBE certificate.
Mr. Chairman, 6F1 is actually a request of one of the vendors who was late in submitting our, I think he was late in submitting a proposal for the solicitation that we had out on the street. I don't know if that vendor's here. Leslie Rotheren is here to give you the staff report, but I think that should probably come after he presents his case.
Mr. Peter M. Martinez. All righty.
Good morning and thank you for everyone's time and consideration this morning. My name is Peter Martinez and I am a United States Marine Corps veteran. I started, launched, expanded the bike share program for the city of Orlando. And in the fall, I resigned from my position with the bike share company in Orlando to pursue a bike share program on the coast. And recently, after that, a RFP came out on Thanksgiving. And I was late to submit to the RFP because we had, we were waiting for a veteran's preference, a veteran's certificate from the state. We were encouraged to sign up for a minority-owned business, but we opted to go for the veteran-owned business designation. And that certificate came in after our submittal to the county. So we're just hoping to get consideration for the proposal, which is going to be opened up in two days, on the 26th.
Okay, the pleasure of the Board. Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just here if you had any comments or need anything answered.
Do you want to give us some background?
Okay, sure. Okay, as Mr. Martinez said, he did submit a proposal to our office on January 3rd, however, it was late. The RFP process was out on the street for 40 days. It did go out over the holidays, but we did allow sufficient time for the RFP process. Our minimum requirement is 21 days. The purchasing office, we manage about 165 formal solicitations annually. We have had, in the past 10 years, eight bids that have been late. Six were returned by purchasing with no further action requested by the Board. Two other situations did come before the Board, which I put in the staff report, outlined those two cases that did come before the Board. Purchasing does have a deadline for all of our solicitations. There is a due date and time that is identified in the RFP documents and it does state that any bids will not be accepted. That is our policy. In addition, Brevard County does not have a veterans' preference policy in place. That was not a requirement for this RFP. Mr. Martinez could have submitted his RFP without the certification. And at this point, our established procedures, purchasing does not recommend accepting an RFP or a bid submittal after the due date and time.
Thank you. Pleasure of the Board.
Just make a comment, sir.
Sure. You have the floor.
Mr. Martinez, really thank you for your service. It's really appreciated, especially these days we live in. I think that to do this right now, I think it's going to mess with policy enough that we're going to, from an old former colleague's word, go down a slippery slope if we do this at this point. So I'm probably not going to support this at this time, but I do thank you for your service.
Commissioner Nardi.
I feel for you. I do, because I've been in this situation before where we've had someone come in for whatever reason, they didn't submit properly or they submitted late. And while I do believe that Brevard County does need a veterans' preference and I will get on that, so that's one positive thing that you've done is brought that to my attention because I had no idea that we didn't have that in this county and we definitely need to have that. I think that we open ourselves up to litigation by not going through this process as set forth in our policy. So at least for me, I can't support this either, although I do feel for you. I do.
Commissioner Barfield.
Mr. Martinez, I own a company. I've done major proposals, large. We started from very, well, from two people to well over 1,000 people. And nothing is more disheartening when you work hard on a proposal and it doesn't go in on time. And I know where you're coming from. And we cannot change a policy, though. We cannot change, procurements have to be equal across the board to everyone. But Commissioner Nardi, I agree with the, you know, that we need to get veterans' preference. We will work on things like that. And of course, I do want to thank you for your service. But I tell you, this is one of those things where we're in a difficult situation. We have procurement rules that have to be equal across the line to everyone. So I'm not going to be able to support this.
Pleasure of the Board. Moving right along. Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Mr. Tobias, would you like to introduce this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is just a request for advertising of a proposed ordinance. So this, in fact, would heighten public awareness instead of restricting it. This has three common sense ethics reforms that, instead of aimed at the lobbyists out there, because that didn't work so well with some of my fellow commissioners, this is aimed at us. So this is an attempt to bring some transparency to what happens behind the dais to the members. And these are very clear reforms that have successfully worked in other jurisdictions. So none of this stuff is new. And those three basic ones that, I think I mentioned a little bit of it on the 10th during the last ethics reform package that I brought forward, but these three specifically are a ban on electronic communications. While we are in a session, I believe that the taxpayers give up their time to come speak to us and we should not be on our cell phones looking up stuff. Some former commissioners have been extremely rude to some of the speakers and based on things that they were getting off of the cellphone. And I think that we should take this job extremely seriously and do our research before we show up to this commission meeting instead of while we're at it. The second is to deal with revolving door extension. Statutorily, we're not allowed to lobby this commission for two years. This would extend it to six. This is pretty simple. The reason that this would benefit taxpayers is because our relationships on the Board last longer than two years. We have relationships as commissioners with many department heads that would provide us a little more insight than what the average Joe might. So this takes a little bit of the perception of favoritism still being offered to former members of the commission. And finally, travel approval. I think that if any of us decide to go on junkets, for a lack of a better term, with taxpayer dollars, and this does not pertain to you if you use your own finances, but if you're using hard-working Brevard citizens' tax dollars to go on these junkets, that there may be no return on investment or that may be questionable. You should at least come to the commission to get the approval of other members on the Board so they are at least in an agreement that this is a wise use of taxpayer dollars. And again, this is under sunshine, so, you know, there are a whole bunch of issues as far as me speaking with other commissioners. This has been out in the public domain for three or four days now. So I believe, and, you know, apparently 15 pages was too many last time, so I worked hard to get this down to four or five. So I think that I've made that pretty approachable because, I mean, the first page is all the title and the last page is all signatures. So we're looking at three pages. I think that we can digest these three basic premises in three days. And even if we can't, this is, again, again, this is for just the advertisement in the Florida today so we can discuss this in detail at a future date. So that is the idea on these ethical approaches to take to lend a little more transparency to what we do behind the dais here. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Any comments from the Board? Commissioner Nardi.
Again, I really like the idea of any kind of ethics reform. While I understand both sides of the argument as far as this is concerned, I think that last time, you know, the failure of the lobbyist registration was probably because we didn't give it enough time. Now, whether we're prepared or not isn't the issue, but I think that we have more, we have a better chance at success of getting any kind of ethics legislation through this commission if we have a workshop or we can have some solid public input where people can come and, you know, have the time. Because obviously, this will probably end up in the Florida.
Because obviously, this will probably end up in the Florida Today again. But, you know, there was people that wished they would have come to that last meeting. And unfortunately, they don't check the additions to the agenda after it's been released the first time. So, while we have that luxury and the time and we've already committed to that time by assuming this job, I want the public to have a chance to come and discuss these issues. Because again, I'm in favor. I mean, I don't have a problem with any of these. I just, I think that they could use some tweaking, and I think that public input's important.
Okay, so we have some cards here. Let's hear from that public. Pamela Sal.
Pamela Sal Viera. The clock is useless today from this side, by the way. Unless you can, it counts 59 seconds over and over. And unless you can keep.
We can.
Plus, I'm a hard counter. I can't keep up with how many 59 seconds have gone by.
I don't know what you're seeing, but back here, it starts now, it starts at 5, and then it blinks at me when it gets to 2. And that's probably when it's showing up, one out there.
No, it's doing 59 down over and over.
Oh, okay, so we're going to have to tweak this.
Yeah, so, because, anyway, I've been impressed. Most people have kept up with their 59 seconds. I'm not sure I can, but I think, I don't think I have even two minutes today.
I'll tell you when you get down to your real 59 seconds.
Okay, all right, thanks. Well, I'm excited, once again. I'm not used to coming up here and being happy with what's going on.
Much progress.
I think anything that's going to improve transparency and bolster ethics is a move in the right direction. I'm a little bit conflicted. If I thought we were going to get to the next step, I could wait and have more discussion then. But I'm not sure that y'all are going to vote to move forward, so I'm going to throw a few things out there. I brought this up before on the texting. And as a result of actions after that, I requested the texts of all the commissioners for the prior six months this past October. And they, three commissioners gave information that really shows that, you know, there's little to nothing that was done. One commissioner was kind of coached. One commissioner had pictures of the lagoon. One commissioner spent six hours producing a receipt and pointed that out. So, this, in some ways, moving towards this would be economical if anyone were to, the information would be more readily available. Two commissioners had no, nothing, no text to report at all. And I've got all this if anyone wants it. But I know one of those commissioners was on their electronic device in front of us while they're saying there's no text to report. So, it makes me wonder, are they doing personal business or maybe another job while they're sitting up there on the dais? Ronald Reagan is a hero to many people, and he said, "Trust but verify." And that's basically what a lot of this is. I notice on the travel, I have a question about that. And I know this isn't, I'm not entitled to ask questions, but I have to wonder if this could possibly limit some of the contention over the EDC issues that people have with the county. And I just, I just think that this would be a great building block to start with on the ethics, because my ultimate goal is more oversight, more independent oversight. So, I commend you. I hope we, I love the idea of a workshop. I just think we can really build a lot of integrity for the constituents, and that's what you need. You need to build confidence in your public. Thanks.
Thank you. Melissa Martin.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Melissa Martin from Cocoa. I'm talking on behalf of our local chapter of Represent Us. It's called the Represent the Space Coast today. But I think everything's been said as far as the need. I believe in the need. There's definitely a call for restoration of the relationship between the government and the people. I don't think that's up for question these days. It's palpable. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that even though county government or maybe some city governments feel that there's no need here or within your own offices, there's no need, there is, on behalf of the people, a definite need. I saw this very recently in the campaign for the Lagoon referendum where we were discussing the various aspects of the referendum to the community, various speaking engagements and lots of opportunities to discuss this with various groups and organizations. And a lot of the people, especially on social media, where people feel more free to express themselves. It was a very ugly time for discussing the issues of the fact that no one trusts, or not, I wouldn't say no one, but there are a lot of people who do not trust any government, to include the county, unfortunately, with or without grounds. So, that being said, I believe that, well, I would say this. That compelled me to reach out to the county manager, and we had a sit-down, and we were able to look at previous referendums and things and how the county used the public's money for various tax purposes. And I came away with it relieved, and it fulfilled my expectations of how government should work on the internal levels. There were plenty of control measures in place. And I used to work for the government as well. So, my expectations were pretty, you know, pretty clear, and the standards were there. I believe that there are still transparency issues and accountability issues that pertain to all levels of government. But again, I believe that this is a welcome opening to a necessary dialogue for the people, whether that be in the form of a workshop or some sort of public input, because this is hugely important. Whether or not I personally support this particular ordinance is still TBD. I'd like to see a couple tweaks here and there. But I definitely support the call for an open and serious dialogue for some sort of robust clarification of what government does, how they do it, and how it exactly serves the public interests. So, that's my two cents on that.
You have two minutes left.
All right.
May I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
It seems to me that an awful lot of people have this impression that there are no ethics rules in place.
Right.
And that if you're an elected official or you work for government, you're necessarily guilty of something.
Exactly.
And there's some boogeyman behind every tree and around every corner.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Were you aware that we already have in Brevard County, three ethics policies?
Oh, yes.
One is for travel. One is for employing or contracting with former Brevard commissioners. And then we have a five-pager here that's conflict of interest and ethics policy.
Yes, I actually.
Okay, so there are ethics policies in place.
Right, right.
So, then my question becomes, are you or anyone else aware of any of these not working or failures or abuses of them?
I am aware of the fact that what is, is not being translated to the people.
Yeah, I think you're correct. So, but thank you for your input. And obviously, we care about you folks. So, it's good that we're having this discussion.
I agree. And the communication is the relationship, you know? And right now, I would qualify it as a broken relationship that needs to be mended. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Jim Stone. Haven't seen you around for a while. Where have you been?
Oh, I've been trying to write letters. And they seem to get ignored.
Okay. Please tell us your name and address again, please.
All right, and I agree with the young lady with that clock. I thought it was on my last minute. I still think you owe me three minutes.
And that could be.
Yeah, let's try again with the envelope.
We'll get it fixed.
Now, first of all, that sidewalk issue really made me feel good. You all have been holding my sidewalk bond in ransom for over 20 years. And so, it's a sore subject with me as part of this whole development process is. First of all, I'd like to say I'm against your proposal. And the reason I'm against your proposal is it doesn't go nearly deep enough, because all of these aggravations start at a pinnacle, which is you. Feed down to the next level of management, which is your county manager. Feed down then to each department director. Feed down then to supervisors and however else you're structured. Now, I was such a bad engineer during the Apollo program that when it came to an end, management got to me and made me do what we call payback. They put me in management. I had every quality control inspector under me, every quality control engineer, every safety engineer, every configuration management team member, all documentation. And I'll go on and on. Everything nobody else wanted, I got. And for one reason is when I think somebody's getting screwed, if I'm allowed to use that language here, I think you have one of your ethics thing about language, that became my problem. And believe me, my goal as management with 485 people reporting to me was to talk to everybody at least once every three months. And with people spread out in eight facilities, working three shifts a day, seven days a week, it was quite a challenge. And then I look at this and I say, "What's missing in Brevard County?" And that is, you have no feedback process that I'm aware of. People in the field want to go to their management? Maybe. They don't have an Omsbedman, which we had. I didn't want somebody going to Omsbedman. I wanted them to come to me. And it took me a few months when that trust was developed to a point that I knew it worked. And for the first STS-10 flights of the shuttle program, we had lots of problems, but we never had a major failure. And I credit that to the people on the floor that weren't afraid to speak up. And I don't see where you have a program in place in Brevard County for, number one, the people in the programs to speak, and, number two, people like me to speak. Because all these things I point out in the package I gave you. And an example of that, too. My good friend Charlie Christopher Foley. I bought my citrus grove from Charlie's brother over 30 years ago. So, I got to know the family real well. And the way Charlie was treated in his late 80s and early 90s before he died is a by-god sin. What he had to go through to get his little 20-lot development approved. And then after that, your county manager got into it after everything had been approved and houses being built, and changed the rule. So, he does get involved. He knows what I'm talking about. It made me so mad, because for four years, while Charlie was going through the development process, I said, I said, "Charlie, I don't want to hear it. I know what you're going to do, and I can't do anything about it. There is no vehicle to do anything about it." The last time he came to me, another major business partner in Brevard, I asked him, "Go with me to a meeting." And we met with the people involved and said, "Look, you're making Charlie put in a development on a main highway, and you're not allowing people to come out on the highway. You make them go by a dirt road into the back of the development and come out on a single road."
You have a minute.
Thank you. Anyway, that's the kind of stuff. He came to me in tears. And when a 93-year-old man comes to you in tears, that's pretty sad. It's under the, I changed the rules stuff, incidentally. The engineer that was with me, after three submittals and three reviews, quit his business in Brevard and became a city engineer in another town in Florida and is still practicing there. The Chuck Nelson flaglot rule really screwed me, because after putting in my development, I had to go through the whole process again because your director of development ignored that little block in the top of the form that says "minor development." And I had to go through the whole major development process all over again, which took me another three years, and hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of dollars for more engineering drawings, more surveys. And the only thing that happened was, at the end of it, I went out and put in six concrete monuments. And as I say, I can go on and on, but the two letters, the one is, "I was rejected by Florida Today 36 times." So, I spent hundreds of dollars and put my letter in on the business page. And it must have hit some strokes, because I never got a call on it. And the second letter is one you really ought to read, because I don't know how many people in Brevard County are affected by that. After 40 years of continuous employment, starting with North American Aviation as a design engineer and ending as director and logistics guy with United Space Alliance, my life insurance and my medical were both canceled in this past year after putting money into that all this time. And I can't find anybody to ring that bell anywhere. Congressmen, senators, the Department of Labor, the Inspector General of the United States, the Florida Insurance Commissioner, and on and on and on. My time's up, and I keep the list going. But you need some ethic system set up. And it needs to be big time, and it needs to be real, and it needs to have teeth in it. And it has to be open, so when people go there, they feel they're not going to end up getting fired. And people in the citizenry won't have their money tied up in a sidewalk bond for 20 years on a one-way street.
Thank you.
You bet.
John Solana. Welcome, sir.
Morning. John Shiana is my name, Bellwood, Florida. This notion of ethics and open government and so forth, occasionally, somebody like Mr. Tabia reminds us of it. And you all bring it to light that we have open government. And it's obvious. I read today's paper. I'm here now. And we have an open government. We all encourage it and support it. And it'll be a sorry day if that ever changes. Anyway, I would just encourage you to endeavor to support the notion, and I think you will. And for those of you that worked at it and figured out that being a county commissioner is a full-time job, you have my compliments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that's all the comment cards that I have. Chair recognizes Commissioner Zanardi.
I think you possibly didn't clear me from before.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Pritchett.
Yeah, I think we need to have a workshop. I agree also on these types of topics. I guess, being a city girl, coming from what we did there, by the time we got to resolutions, we kind of knew where we were going as a council, and we would just tweak it out with what we needed to do. I think what's throwing me off on this is we get this up here, and I've got so many questions. There's things I agree with, things I don't disagree with. So, I would rather, Mr. Tabia, if you would, that we wouldn't put this through to advertise it as a resolution, that maybe we pick a time specific and talk about these items. Texting, you know, if people are talking to you and you text, I mean, it's just also a matter of rude. So, you know, there's things we need to do different. But, you know, if you're going to pick on cellphones, I mean, I can get messages on my wristwatch now. I mean, computers do it, your iPads do it. So, and then there's even Snapchat Stephen was telling me about. You can get a text and it disappears within 30 seconds. So, you know, if you're going to be dishonorable, there's ways to get around it for sure. But again, I think the communication issue between the constituents and what we're doing up here is what's really important and giving everybody a sense of that we're trying our best to be honorable. As an accountant, you know, you can't have positive, you know, when you do an audit, you can't say there's absolutely no fraud involved, but you try to get a reasonable assumption that there isn't any. So, you put in checks and balances and controls. So, I think that's what we're trying to do here, Mr. Tabia, if I'm right on what you're trying to accomplish here, is get into the right checks and balances. I don't for one minute think there's one person up here that's dishonest on this commission. But I think down the road, I'm not sure what could, who could be elected at the time. But I think we do need to work on checks and balances. Some of these, I'm not so sure. Some of these, I'm not so sure needs to be a resolution. Maybe we need to strengthen policy. But again, I think we would be able to work these out better in a workshop where we're a little more comfortable because we're getting to know each other as five people. And it might not be fair me bringing up the city because that was another level that I worked on. And the state of Florida isn't going to work either because none of them had relationships. But I think if we got together and we're allowed to have conversations, the five of us could come to some conclusions of what we think we need to do moving forward that's best for our county. So I, this resolution here, again, there's things in it, I could go down the line on it. I'd rather do it in a workshop. I mean, even reporting to the city manager, that might be an ethics issue. So there's so many things we'd have to work through this even to be able to get there. But I think three things on a resolution is tough for me. So I would be comfortable and I probably would support some type of workshop in the future that we can come prepared with the items we need, want to bring as a commission and work through them that way. That way it doesn't show up in the paper. Two commissioners don't want ethics because that's just not the truth. But I think if we get a working document that's fair and works legally and doesn't just weigh down with laws that don't make sense, I think I would be more comfortable supporting that.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Barfield.
Yes, I don't want anyone to walk away from here thinking we don't have an ethics policy. And I'd like to ask Mr. Knox, if you could look at our, give us, I think it's BCCO3, our ethics policy, and possibly tell us what the differences are with this proposed ordinance and any conflicts and if it doesn't supersede any of that. Because I think we know about our ethics policy. We've been adhering to that.
Yeah, I think the ordinance covers some items that aren't on the ethics policy, number one. Number two, the ordinance is an ordinance, it's not a policy, so it can't be changed without going through a public hearing and those kinds of formal processes. Whereas an ethics policy is a resolution which could probably be changed without any public hearing. Those are the big differences between the two.
I mean, the issues it covers or they cover both in the ordinance and the ethics policy?
No, I don't think, I think some of the issues that are in the ordinance are not covered by the policy.
Okay. Well, the, I know we have our other ordinance on the travel. All of that is included. We all have expense reports. We do. We have to get approval to travel and it's all within our system. What is, I mean, everything's been said here as far as I know is what we adhere to already.
Well, the travel policies, I agree, you're covered. You have state law that requires you to do certain things with travel. You have, when you go away and decide that you want to stay at hotels, for example, or if you have to go to a seminar, if you go to a conference on space out in Colorado, which is an example that's been talked about. You present all your bills and all your expenditures to the finance department and the clerk's office to get, if you want, if you're seeking reimbursement. And there's a record of all the stuff that you do. It's always public records. So people can come in and see what you did and where you went and what you spent. So that's probably pretty well covered as far as the travel expenses. There's, there isn't a policy per se about who gets to go where, which is, you know, this is a more specific policy than some of the experiences I've had up here with commissioners' travel. The revolving door policy is not in the code of the ethics provisions that you have in your policy. It is in state law that the commission cannot lobby before the county commission after you leave office for a period of two years. This one adds four years to that and extends it to directors and employees as well. The use of cell phones, I don't believe that's covered in your policy at all. So that's an issue that you may want to take up and talk about.
I have a lot of questions and issues, especially, I mean, we talk about the six-year number, definition of a lobbyist. And then what it does not include, it says, you know, a citizen acting in his or own private capacity or, and then there's a paid officer employee of a company representing or advocating on behalf of that company before the board is not a lobbyist. Yet then if you have, where it says further, that when you leave the county commission, you have six years. And if you're with a company that comes to speak before the county commission, you can't do that because it's, one cancels out the other. I'm just not sure. There's just a lot of things in here that don't match up. And I, as far as the cell phones and the texting, that's something that doesn't really bother me. In fact, you know, that's something, if we want to put some stringent rules on that, fine. But the problem with is, you can text on a tablet, you can, I use my phone to email to also research stuff. So we'd have to come down and nail that out more specifically. But here's one thing that I just, I just don't understand, and that's the travel procedure. When you look through, that's section seven. First off, which commissioner may attend, what business meeting and whatever, how do you determine which, which person? I'm on different boards that our chairman has graciously appointed me to. And we have to travel those. That's part of the deal. I have my report of what I travel. I go to every kind of event you can think of locally for my constituents. I go to ribbon-cutting ceremonies. I go to different homeowners association. I go to all kinds of different, I have open houses at Cocoa Beach Library, Cocoa Library. All of that's on my list. I submit that and it gets approved. I submit every four months, three or four months for travel. There is a lot that goes on there. But then, you know, I understand that we have to account for our travel. That's, makes a lot of sense. But then when you get down and say commissioners using their own personal funds shall not be subject to this section, that's great. So the question becomes, can I be, or anybody on this board, I pay my own way to some conference or whatever, I'm representing Brevard County as a county commissioner, but I'm totally exempt from any transparency now because I'm paying my own way. And that's not right. That's not right. I mean, I pay my way in a number of places, but it just doesn't make sense. So there's a lot of issues with this and how it's interpreted and how we make this work. We have an ethics policy in place. We have strict procedures on our travel. We have other procedures in place. And I submit to you that, okay, I mean, we can make changes, but I don't want anyone to think we don't have procedures in place. So.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Tobias.
Thank you. And I'll use this as a summary because I'm sure, even though I'll be more than willing to answer any questions as we move forward. But some issues have been brought forward. First of all, people have said that this is coming fast and there's been no opportunity to vet this type of material. First of all, all this does is put this in the public domain even more than it is over the next two weeks so we can make substantive changes to this policy. I'm not perfect and never have told anyone that I am so. I'm just putting the issue out there. And let me tell you why I'm putting the issue out there. Because for the last two years, a couple of my fellow commissioners have done nothing. Not an ordinance, not a workshop dealing with reforms when it comes to ethics. And the fact that there hasn't been any ethical lapse is not an excuse to not increase transparency. There should be no needed excuse to increase transparency. We talk about travel. Yes, there is a travel opportunity coming up. And I use the word junket, but let me use the word correctly that I got here. And it's in Colorado Springs. It's the 33rd Space Symposium. So I looked up the word symposium and it's Greek. And it means to drink together. So I took that a step further. I looked at the conference and I found there are at least two opportunities where I have an open bar sponsored by a major corporation to go drink with other people. And I'm not going to, Phoebe, you can public record, I've gone on a couple conferences for the college. But we go through a board and there's basically two criteria. Criteria one, I'm presenting a paper to add to the discourse. Or number two, I'm a moderator. So the second part of this 33rd Space Symposium, I looked up some of the forums that I could learn things about. Space fusion. Right there, I'm not very well qualified to deal with space fusion. And let me mention some other ones out here that weren't with alcohol but were international astrophotography or something like, some of these words I can't even present. So the question becomes, before we send some of our commissioners to go out and drink on the taxpayer's dime, I think it's very apparent that you should justify at least some semblance of a return on the investment. So the fact that this hasn't happened before probably needs, it needs to be changed. We make changes up here. We just saw this. We had an add-on with All Aboard Florida and we had some good discourse. It came in at $500,000 and I think we amended it to $325,000. That was a 60 or a 65-page document that I took very seriously, read through, spoke with some of the players to determine how best to tackle that type. That is what this form is for. I don't want to put this down the road at some workshop that may or may not happen because history says it does not happen. So let's put it aside. Let's say that this is a working document. Let's incorporate some of those changes. If you looked at the lobbyist definition in there, that's a change of suggestions that were made that quite frankly didn't, in all honesty, need to be clarified. And let me tell you why. Because I have data from other counties and cities that have word for word the same definitions in there that is working effectively. So to think that one of us is naively going to be able to find a hole in an argument in something in the real world that's happened for years is probably false. All I'm asking for is a thumbs up or a thumbs down. Let's have the discussion. Let's have constituent participation. This gives two weeks where constituents can call up our office and talk about how we could make this better. Because I don't disagree with many of the, sorry, suggestions that have been made. What I do agree with, with all three, even Mr. Stone who disagreed with me and said that this doesn't go far enough, and let me, he's right. And I said it, I said it before, I have another package on the way because I take ethics reform very seriously. It is one of the things that I ran on. No one asked me, John, how many ethics policies do you have? And it's terrible. It is absolutely terrible for me to open a newspaper and find out that I don't understand the way government was run when I have a fellow commissioner that had to ask what the difference between a policy and an ordinance was. That's ridiculous. Let's do this in a public forum where we can act like adults, disagree, come to some sort of ending that will be best. Because this is not about me. In fact, I don't need to sponsor this stuff. If there's someone else willing to put this on the agenda, it does not need to be me. It just, there hasn't been anyone else to do this. But let's come together and instead of say, what's best for me as a commissioner, let's say what's best for the citizens out there so they can be active participants, so we can give them more avenues to come speak with us, so we can treat them with respect by not being on our cellphone, so we can let them know more acutely about where we're spending their resources. That's all I'm asking. And I think it is very disingenuous has been brought up by saying, no, this doesn't give constituents enough input, so let's kill it now. By advertising it, we are providing constituents with added time to make improvements. And that's all this document is. It's a living, breathing document that can be approved. And I took the suggestions that were made on my last unsuccessful ethics ordinance and incorporated into this one. So as bad as you think this was or is right now, it was even worse before I got the suggestions that you amended. But these are common sense reforms. Nothing's radical. Nothing's new. This just provides more transparency to the citizens. And a vote now, not in favor of even advertising it, is telling the folks that stood there and said, I didn't get, I don't have a, I didn't tweet anything out. I don't know who Melissa is or represent us is. I haven't, she's not in my district, but she described the relationship as broken. And by saying, we don't want to discuss this, and over the next two weeks, I understand why she says it's broken. And I'll go on the record again, but this is only part of the reform. There is reform that needs to take place in the electoral arena that I'm working on right now. And I'll tell you what, if you don't like this common sense reform, goodness gracious, you will not like the reform coming up that lends more transparency and lowers the amount that constituents can play in the game to take out these big money donors. This is the low-hanging fruit, guys. But I think it takes us in a good step to mending that relationship that we haven't broken, but nonetheless that we have inherited. So I strongly, strongly, strongly ask for your guys' indulgence, at least for the next two weeks, to give this some time to percolate, come up with good ideas. Come prepared to a meeting. Come prepared. Go to the county attorney and say, hey, listen, I do, I saw the agenda, it came out on Friday. That was all Monday. You had all Monday to say, okay, can we get this shorn up? Can we get this tightened? Here's the suggestion that I have to make it better instead of saying, no, I don't like it, there's many problems with it. I wouldn't expect that from my 14-year-old daughter. I certainly don't expect, I certainly don't expect that from my fellow commissioners. Don't tell me how that it's wrong. Give me a solution to make it better and more palatable. That's our job up here. That's why we work so darn hard is to have a good relationship with the constituents. And it requires a lot of work. And I take this extremely, extremely seriously. And I expect that of my fellow commissioners. So thank you so much. I appreciate the discourse, no matter what way this goes. But understand that no matter what way this goes, it doesn't mean that ethics reform is done. Because there is certainly a lot more that needs to, as Mr. Stone said, that needs to take place so we can continue to have a better relationship with the people that worked so darn hard to send us their hard-earned dollars. So thank you so much for taking the time, having this on, having this on the agenda. And again, I'm here to answer any questions if there are any.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Isnardi.
And while I would agree, again, I love this ethics reform because I've been watching it closely. I know that, I reached out to Randy Fine, Representative Randy Fine, just the other day because I, again, I mean, I'm trying to do my research too with the limited amount of time that we had with this. And I see what's coming down for local ethics reform and it's kind of exciting. And I mean, I'm full on board because it was one of the things that I fought for at the city level. Nothing I campaigned promised on, nothing I told people I would do. It was something that I actually did while I served on city council. So my goal and my thinking on the workshop wasn't to delay the process because I've been to dozens upon dozens of workshops. And what happens in workshop is good dialogue. And I know that, you know, you obviously, this is something you feel very strong, you may be able to move as far as tweaking some of the details. But the goal should be success. If you want this ethics stuff to pass and you want these reforms to pass like I do, we only need one more vote to make it happen. Because we saw what happened last time with your lobbyist legislation. And that should have been pretty black and white. But I don't want to, I don't want to risk failure of this just to say, just to have the other commissioners. on record as saying that they don't want it. I mean, it's okay, because either way, I will vote to bring it to another meeting if that's what it takes, because I don't think that scrapping it is the right thing to do either. But it's difficult, because when this comes out of your office, we can't have the dialogue to say, "Well, Mr. Tabaya," and that's one of the unfortunate things of Sunshine, because even if your heart's in the right place and you want to have that discussion, I can't call you and say, "I think you should do this," or "I think you should do that," because I think that this is definitely workable. I mean, I like all three items. I think that we could probably, again, you know, with some of the details. But I also like some of the stuff that came out of committee that maybe we could add to it. And I'm sure, you know, as brilliant as we all like to think that we are, I'm sure there would be some excellent public input, too. And I think whether it ends up passing or, I want this bill, or I want this ordinance to be successful. I don't want it to fail. I mean, again, if left with the option to kill it or push it through, I'm going to vote to bring it to public hearing, because at least, because I am an experienced council person, doesn't make me an expert on every issue. I understand that I don't need that much time to come up with my revisions. But when you have four people trying to come up with their own, perhaps some public input, I don't want to, I don't want to risk failure of this. I want this to pass. So I think that workshop is always the way to go. We were always able to, again, have the dialogue, get input from the public, sometimes come up with some extra and better ideas. Perhaps we can add two or three more items to this before it comes back for public hearing. But by no means did I suggest workshop to delay nor to squelch us. I want this to succeed. That's why workshops are a good thing.
Commissioner Pritchett.
The goal here is ethics and how to get there. I feel like almost this is a little bit of the cart before the horse. I wouldn't mind having a workshop within the next week to bring this resolution to workshop, to have conversation. I think by the time we get to resolution, we should have the purpose totally worked out. There's a lot in this that I would like to have changed, Mr. Tabaya. And I can't call you up, because I do abide by Sunshine Law. And I couldn't talk to you about all these things, but this is our first conversation. And I think that if we're able to do this, I mean, having a big ethics workshop, just bring it all out, start having conversation, figure out where we want to go, where we need to go, and how to get there. I think that would start against the purpose. Even Melissa did say that she wanted a workshop, and that does give the community input. I don't want to have workshop in six months. I think as soon as we're prepared to do it, I'm fine with it. I'm never afraid of conversation. I'm a female. So I enjoy having conversations and hearing what everybody has to say, because I like to get all the information I can before I come to a conclusion. But again, this becomes a legal document. And when we get there, I want it to be all right. I want all the punctuation places where they should be. I want the people having oversight over it to be in a good place. I mean, Mr. Witten, right now, would not be good oversight for this, because, you know, basically, we have, you know, the ability to tweak him a little bit up here, too, if we were unethical. So I think there's some things we do need to work out. I am for having ethics in place and the checks and balances. I'm not sure I think it's fair to say that everybody up here is just trying to get rid of it if they're not comfortable with this resolution. The goal is to get to ethics. I'm for getting to the goal. I just would rather have a workshop in a few weeks, have all these discussions where we can talk quite comfortably and figure out how we get there. So that's, I'm not going to support passing this right now and advertising it. I don't mind advertising a workshop in a couple of weeks. That's fine with me. But I would like to make this a really good document by the time we're ready to go with it. And again, some of these things in here, I think we need to strengthen up policy. And maybe you guys need to tell me, this needs to be a resolution on top of policy. I want to hear that, but I just want us to work it out as a commission and with the community of figuring out how to get this thing right.
Okay, I guess it's time for me to weigh in. Never let it be said that I would stand in the way of open-door policies. I didn't move out of my district. I don't have a lock on my door. I welcome the idea of openness. I know that we already have three separate policies that we live by. I haven't seen, I've looked for, I've not seen any situation that any of these were violated by past commissioners. It's worked very well for years. I would agree that with Melissa, that there's probably some kind of a disconnect, because the public doesn't know that we have these policies in place. The public, and not all, there's, I will tell you, it's obvious, since I've been in this position. I know there's paranoid people that think there's a boogeyman behind every tree and around every corner. I mean, we've got people up here that say things that just, you know, will make your head explode, like, "We're all going to die from some foreign disease that you're going to get from a cat," even though every vet and every doctor and even the medical examiner that I spoke to in the county said that wasn't true. But that person was convinced they were going to die unless we did something. So, you know, and I really, really think that the effort here is to create more bureaucracy. I don't really think the effort here is to create more openness. I challenged each of the commissioners, when the new commissioners took office, to find ways to fix the roads. After being here for two years, my experience tells me that the biggest challenge we have is, how are we going to fix these roads? Because these roads are going to cost us tons of money going forward. As Mr. Denninghouse said today, if you get a road that's been compromised and it just, you can't repair it anymore, that means you have to replace it, which costs five to seven times more than it would to repair it. So we have to find that money. But instead of spending the last two and a half months doing something constructive, Mr. Tabaya, in my opinion, has spent the last two and a half months trying to be destructive. He's trying to play the gotcha game. When did you stop beating your wife? I mean, this is what we're talking about here, because if you voted, and as I did, the lobbyist thing, because I didn't want to create more bureaucracy, to me, it was a solution for a problem that didn't exist. And I realized that some people were going to try and paint me into a corner that Commissioner Smith isn't for openness, because he voted against registering lobbyists. Well, nothing could be further from the truth. But we're doing the same thing here. We're creating more bureaucracy with no purpose, other than to try and make other commissioners look bad. This is not well thought out. As Commissioner Barfield pointed out, if I use my money to go on a trip, I can do or say anything I want, and there's no transparency there. So the purpose of this isn't transparency. The purpose of this is something else. I could be wrong. But my idea of this purpose is to play the gotcha game. That's all it is. Because he's openly stated that he wants to do everything he can to get myself and Mr. Barfield not elected if we choose to run again. So I think that's really the purpose here. Now, if we want to have a workshop, I think that would be welcomed, because I think it's important that we communicate to the public that we do, in fact, care about openness. We are here to protect you. That's what our purpose is. Mr. Barfield and I, unlike Mr. Tabaya, we don't need this job. We have money. We've already succeeded in life. We write our names on the front of paychecks. We've run successful businesses. We don't depend on the government for our paycheck. We're here to serve you. We're not here to cheat you. We're here to serve you. So to suggest that if I were to vote against this, that I am against openness, is absurd. So I would like to, I welcome the idea of having some kind of workshop, so that we can get you people involved and hear what you have to say, and we can tell you, at the same time, what we already have in place. There's no reason to reinvent the wheel. Can some of these be tweaked? Absolutely. But the suggestion of banning cellphones, as was pointed out, every one of these iPads, MePads, whatever, whatever these things are, you can text on these. So why would you single out iPhones or cellphones when you can do the same thing that you want to prohibit, you can do the same thing on these others? This was not well thought out. I maintain the purpose wasn't benevolent. I maintain the purpose was something else. But let's make something benevolent out of this. Let's be constructive instead of destructive. Let's move forward. Let's get with the county manager. Let's have some kind of public forum, and we can discuss it. We can have a workshop, a one-hour, two-hour, three-hour workshop, whatever, and we can get this out in the open, so that people can hear that, yes, we do care about openness. We're not paranoid. We don't think there's a boogeyman behind every corner and behind every tree. We want to move forward and do constructive things for this county. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Pritchett.
I'd like to make a motion for city staff to come back with a date and a time. County staff, I'm so sorry. Would y'all mind changing, never mind, that we come back with a time specific that we could get together and sub-type of workshop, Mr. Witten, and discuss ethic items and where we'd like to go in the future with them.
One second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to create a workshop. Anyone wish to vote no? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pass this 5-0. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. You have the floor.
I'd like to make a motion on the agenda item that we have up here. Staff worked extremely hard on this, even though you were very critical of their work product. And I would like to say thank you so very much. The faults in it probably fully lie with me. And the other cities that have put this into place and it's worked so well, I guess they didn't do a very good job crafting those ordinances. But I think that we should do the due diligence of at least putting this up for a vote, as far as advertising, because I, too, have invested a lot of time in this. So I may not get a second on this. I fully don't expect much more, but I would like to put forward a motion to advertise the ordinance as brought to the agenda.
Can I make a comment, sir?
Absolutely. It is appropriate. It's up for discussion.
Mr. Tabaya, would you consider tabling this to after the workshop? That way, we don't completely throw this away totally, but maybe you could bring it back after the workshop.
Thank you. If we have a, if we can set some sort of date right now as to when we do have that workshop, clearly, the last two years, my fellow commissioners have done nothing with ethics. So I don't take that at face value, that we'll deal with it at a workshop in the future. My future is relatively soon. You know, I will have to take time out of my failure as a college instructor to come to do that, but that's a commitment that I make. So if we can, Commissioner, I think that's a great idea. If we can come with a date, I would be absolutely willing to table this and work with staff to make it even better, so we all can get behind this. But without a date, no, I would not be willing to table that.
Commissioner Isnardi.
I was going to pipe up if you didn't notice. Mr. Tabaya, I'm wondering, would you be interested, because then this would, this would press the issue of the workshop, perhaps moving this hearing, this public hearing to February the 21st, commission meeting? I mean, if we were to schedule this item for, because then by then, we could have made the necessary adjustments, omissions, additions, whatever. I mean, would that be, since this is your motion, would that be acceptable?
That would be February 21st, as long as that would, it seems like Commissioner Pritchett is, you're very interested in this. And if you think that gives you the required amount of time to put in to make this a better document, that is going to have a positive impact on Brevard County, I'm okay with February 21st, if that meets your needs. I'm more than, it can be in March, I just, I'm just looking, I'm just looking for a date.
I know. I'm just thinking you put work into it, and I understand that passion, but I think that this document, you'd be able to make the better changes with it after workshop, after had a chance to talk about it. I'd actually like a few hours to talk about it. So I think, you know, it's up to you. You can bring it forward now, maybe it won't pass, or you can wait on it and...
If we have that date on the 21st, if staff can make that available, and you believe that's enough time to craft it in a way with staff, that we can incorporate many of the good ideas that you had, not only on the last one, but this one as well. I have no problem with changing phone to electronic communications device, if that, but absolutely, if February 21st works for you, I will clear my schedule and give you as many hours in the commission and the taxpayers, as many hours to make that happen.
I have a question for you, Mr. Tabaya. I don't understand why time is so critical to you. Are you suggesting that Mr. Barfield and myself don't have an interest in openness? That is what you're suggesting, because you're saying that it never will happen? I took issue with that when you mentioned that an hour ago. They never happen. We'll never go forward with this. We'll never give you an answer. We'll never have a workshop. It'll just go away. Are you suggesting that, actually? Are you really suggesting that?
I am suggesting that in two years, as a county commissioner, you have brought forth no ordinance. So if past performance is a dictator of future performance, then that would be a fair assessment. That is all I'm, that is the only assessment that I am making, that there has been zero ordinances for the last two years dealing with ethics reform. That's not my interpretation. That's a fact. What your constituents, or the Florida Today, or Bill Mick, or anyone else in Brevard County does with that, that is up to them. I am just, instead of making assessments that, you know, that one of us is a failure and the other is not, I am stating in facts. I am trying to be as straightforward.
And so, let me ask you a question, then. If I didn't bring that up, what fact, what fact does that conclusion bring you to? That I must be unethical, because I haven't done anything. Is that correct?
Again, I stated, and you're welcome to bring light to the, that my fact is incorrect. So if you have, and the research that I did was incorrect, and you can show that any meaningful ethical reform that you've brought forward, had any, had it brought forth any measurable changes, I'll be the first one to admit that, you know, the research I did was wrong, and I will apologize. But I'm not going to apologize for stating a fact.
You don't have to apologize to me. I'm not looking for one. I just want to state for the record that I didn't bring anything forward in two and a half years, or however long it's been, because I don't think there's anything wrong with the current policies that we have in place. We have current policies in place. It's not like we're working in a vacuum here and everybody can just do whatever they feel like doing. We have policies in place, and there haven't been any violations in these policies. So that's the only point I want to make.
Mr. Barfield, Commissioner Isnardi, did you have something to say?
That was probably from earlier, but that's okay. Again, I think, I'm not sure if, Mr. Tabaya, you understood, the 21st is the actual next, or that's a commission meeting date. So I don't know if you wanted to have the workshop before then, schedule the workshop for before then, to come back to, that's what I meant, I'm not sure.
Thank you. And I got that as the next one. And if you wanted to do that, I think the 21st is the evening, is that the evening meeting, or is that the morning?
That's the morning meeting.
If you would like to do that immediately following, so, you know, we can have more participation with our constituents, not only from our office, but up here after, I'm more than willing to do that. It's just a scheduling, a scheduling issue. As long as we have a date certain, I'm fully okay. Sorry, bringing it forward as a workshop. Yes, bringing it forward as a workshop.
Commissioner Barfield, you have the floor.
I'd just like to ask Mr. Tabaya, in your eight years in the House, how many ethics reform bills did you sponsor?
Co-sponsored two of them, I believe.
Did it pass?
One of them did.
All righty, moving right along. I think we beat that horse to death. Public comments.
I'm sorry, was there a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. You made a motion to...
Pass it.
Move forward, and then that motion, my understanding, was superseded by one made by...
I just threw out a request, that maybe you would want to change your motion.
Okay, would you like to turn that into a motion and supersede mine?
Can you just change your motion to that?
Sure. Absolutely. It was such a good idea, I was going to give you credit for it. So not stealing Commissioner Pritchett's...
I never mind sharing, so...
Great idea here about bringing forth a motion to have a workshop dealing with ethics of county commissioners for the 21st...
Maybe all ethic items, so if you have other things like this, we can just start good discussions. And that will, I think, actually, that's going to help a lot of the communication things. If we develop relationships, maybe there can be a little more kindness up here as we're moving forward. Maybe there can be a little more kindness up here as we're moving forward and get some conclusions made. I really believe everybody up here is good people, so I think...
So the suggestion is to have it following the 21st meeting?
Have the workshop before we have this come back, sir.
Absolutely. Follow, yes, I would be, we would focus on, not that I can make, but I would hold all ethics reform so we all could work on it collegially on the 21st after the meeting. Yes, that would, that would be my motion.
You got that?
No.
No? Okay. Mr. Tabaya has made a motion to have a public workshop following the February 21st meeting regarding the ethics questions.
Yes, sir.
I thought we were going to have a workshop first.
Excuse me? Well, the time would be following, well, say 1:00 then. Our meetings are normally over by 1:00. So we have it at 1:00. And where do we want to have this meeting? Here?
Mr. Witten, would you have it, would you rather have it upstairs?
Florida Room, yes, sir. Florida Room, Florida Room, 1:00.
Who made the second?
Okay, we don't have a second yet.
I'll second. I just, again, want to be clear, it's a workshop and then a public hearing right after? Or is it...
Well, the public hearing would be part of the workshop.
Would follow.
And then we would move forward with whatever decisions we made, and we could introduce those at the next meeting.
It just actually, whether anybody realizes or not, it got changed because I had suggested having the public hearing on the 21st, but a workshop before then. But it's okay. I mean, we're accomplishing what we want to accomplish. I just want to be clear on what we're putting on the record.
For me, it works, and I think it goes hand in hand. If we have a workshop, that's a public hearing. It's, we're going to be talking about it in public, and then...
But it's not the same as a public hearing.
Okay, it isn't. But at the meeting, at the next following, at the following meeting, whatever comes out of that, we can introduce that as a measure to vote on.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Does that work for you, Mr. Tabaya?
It does, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we're good. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Tabaya, second by Commissioner Isnardi.
They're I words.
Wow, that's interesting.
I wonder how many times I'm going to say that in the next, however. Well, I've only done it twice. Okay, anyone wish to vote no? Pass this 5-0. Okay, now, we're going to go to public comments. I don't have any public comments. So board reports. Mr. Witten.
Two items, commissioners. I think Commissioner Barfield is not available for, and we didn't have a subject for the workshop that was February 9th, so I'd ask that that be struck from the, from the schedule. And so, the ethics workshop would be February 21st at 1:00, and that would be your workshop And probably need a motion of the board to strike that February 9th workshop.
What was that subject?
There was no subject for it.
Not subject yet for the workshop? It's still the same, we started the 21st.
So we need a motion to eliminate the February 9th.
Yes, sir.
Motion to remove February 9th from the workshop schedule.
Commissioner Isnardi made a motion to cancel the February 9th workshop. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Barfield, seconds. Anyone wish to vote no? Pass this 5-0.
Thank you. The second item is, in order to receive public assistance funding from FEMA in the state of Florida, Brevard County must execute the federally funded public assistance funding agreement related to, and this is all related to Hurricane Matthew. Under the agreement, the county will be reimbursed for eligible costs incurred. The agreement has been reviewed by the county attorney's office and the budget office, and we're requesting that the board authorize the chairman to sign the funding agreement and delegate authority to the county manager, our designate, to coordinate the submittal of all documentation required for reimbursement. And so, again, this is for Hurricane Matthew.
So we need a motion for that?
Yes, sir.
So moved.
Commissioner Barfield makes a motion that we do all the stuff. We got that.
I second that.
And we have a second from Commissioner Pritchett. Anyone wish to vote no? Pass this 5-0.
That's it for me, sir.
Mr. Knox?
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Barfield?
No report.
Mr. Tabaya?
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Isnardi?
No report.
Ms. Pritchett?
I called you Bob.
You can call me anything. I've been called much worse. And I have no report. This meeting is adjourned.
Mr. Chairman, you got to read the...
Oh, yeah, I got to read this long thing.
They can't adjourn the meeting yet.
Meeting's not adjourned. I'll put you to sleep before I'm done, I promise. As authorized by Section 286.011-8, Florida statutes, the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners will now commence private attorney-client meetings for the purpose of discussing, for the purpose of discussing settlement negotiations and/or strategy related to litigation and expenditures in Brevard County versus B West Townhouses at Al., 05-2013-CA-025677, and in Deer Park Ranch Limited versus Brevard County Solid Waste Management Department and Department of Environmental Protection. 16-3549 and Farmland Reserve, Inc., DBA, Deseret Ranches of Florida versus Brevard County Solid Waste Management Department and Department of Environmental Protection. Can the folks in the back be quiet, please, until I'm finished reading or go out in the hall? Hello? Can you go out in the hall, please? Thank you. The names of the persons attending the attorney-client private meeting in Brevard County versus B West Townhouses at Al., 05-2013-CA-205677 will be Rita Pritchett, County Commissioner, District 1; Jim Barfield, County Commissioner, District 2; John Tabaya, County Commissioner, District 3; Kurt Smith, County Commissioner, District 4; Christina Isnardi, County Commissioner, District 5; Stockton Witten, County Manager; Scott Knox, County Attorney; Christina Berrios, Assistant County Attorney; Margaret Eddy Sheffield, King Reporting Services. The names of the persons attending the attorney-client private meeting in Deer Park Ranch Limited versus Brevard County Solid Waste Management Department and Department of Environmental Protection, 16-3549, and Farmland Reserve, Inc., DBA, Deseret Ranches of Florida versus Brevard County Solid Waste Management Department and Department of Environmental Protection, 16-3550, will be... Can I just say all the above mentioned names, or do I have to...
You probably just ought to read it through, make sure we comply with the statute.
Following will be Rita Pritchett, County Commissioner, District 1; Jim Barfield, County Commissioner, District 2; John Tabaya, County Commissioner, District 3; Kurt Smith, County Commissioner, District 4; Christina Isnardi, County Commissioner, District 5; Stockton Witten, County Manager; Scott L. Knox, County Attorney; Christine Lepore, Assistant County Attorney; David S. D. Esquire, Gardner, Bist, Bowden, Bush, D., La Via and Wright, PA, outside counsel; Margaret Eddy Sheffield from King Reporting Services. The attorney-client private meetings will be held in the county manager's conference room, third floor of Building C, at the Brevard County Government Operations Center, 2725, Judge Fran Jameson Way, Vieira, Florida. The estimated length of the attorney-client session is one hour or less. I will now entertain a motion to temporarily adjourn this meeting and reconvene in the county manager's conference room.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner, I was going to say Fisher. This has been a long meeting. Commissioner Barfield, second by Commissioner Pritchett. Anyone wish to vote no? Pass this 5-0. I will now entertain, we already did that, so we're good. So we'll meet upstairs.